Let us pray. For the mayor and council members, that they may have wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. We pray for those who serve to make decisions for the benefit of all, and for those whose role is to provide information and guidance for the members of the city council, may they work together in making the challenging decisions. We offer prayers for Mr. McConnell and his change of employment, and express our gratitude for all he has accomplished on behalf of the city of Prescott. We offer gratitude for all the first responders and the important roles that they have in our community. May all in our community work together for the benefit of all. We offer thanks for the generations of brave men and women who secured our liberty and continue to do so. Amen.
Would you please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Ober.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ladderson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Ohr.
Here.
Councilman Shiska.
Here.
And Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
City manager, do you have any announcements?
I have no announcements, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. First proclamation.
Proclaiming June 2016 as National Safety Month, and I believe the police department, Chief Monahan will accept.
Chief, are you up here with me? You're my safety guy? This is a proclamation for National Safety Month. If anybody could see, I'm not safe. I have tons of scars to prove it, but I'm learning. Don't stand next to me, Chief. Whereas Prescott desires to be a community that promises safe and healthy living environments, and whereas safe communities require the cooperation of all levels of government, businesses, and industry, as well as the general public, and whereas new technologies, advancements in safety standards and awareness, and that legislation have helped increase safety, however, there is still improvements to be made to reduce the number of accidental injuries-related deaths, and whereas the goal of the National Safety Council is to raise public awareness about prevention of accidental injuries and deaths by educating Americans to adopt and maintain self-safe and healthy practices in the workplace, on our roads and highways, in our homes and communities. And whereas through the support and observance of National Safety Month, employers are helping to reverse the increase of accidental injuries and deaths in the workplace, and whereas the summer season traditionally is a time of increased accidental injuries and fatalities, is an appropriate time to focus attention on injury risks and preventions. And whereas 2016 National Safety Month, the theme "Safe for Life" was inspired by the idea of continuous risk reduction. Therefore, I, Harry Ober, Mayor of Prescott, do recognize June 16th as National Safety Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for taking the time to acknowledge National Safety Month. As a first responder, along with our brothers and sisters at the fire department, many of the calls for service that the fire and the police go on are related to accidental injuries or even deaths that occur. So by this proclamation, all of us are called to be mindful of safety practices in our daily lives, on our work, not just government employees, but all of us as community members. And so again, thank you, Mayor and council, for taking the time to declare it.
Thanks, Chief.
Item B, proclaiming June 14th as a day of recognition.
Wow, we have a pretty tough proclamation here. Is there somebody here today? Hello, Mr. Good.
That would be me, Mr. Win.
Well, nice to have you here. Proclamation, "A Day of Recognition for Private Reese D. Moreno, Specialist Tenzinell Samten, and all Yavapai County's fallen servicemen for June 14, 2016." Whereas some 187 veterans of armed forces from Yavapai County have given their lives in various wars in defense of freedom, and whereas the city of Prescott and Yavapai County as a whole should honor their servicemen and sacrifice in perpetuity, and whereas there is a plaque that exists on the Yavapai County Courthouse grounds in Prescott, which will be rededicated on June 14, 2016 at 12:00 noon, known as the "All Veterans Memorial" plaque, and whereas two veterans from Prescott, Private Reese D. Moreno, who sacrificed his life on November 24, 2006, and Specialist Tenzinell Samten, who sacrificed his life March 12, 2008, while both serving in the United States Army in Iraq, will be added to this plaque and memorialized in this ceremony. Therefore, Harry Ober, Mayor of Prescott, recognizes June 14, 2016, as a day of recognition for Private Reese D. Moreno, Specialist Tenzinell Samden, and all Yavapai County's fallen servicemen, and encourage citizens to honor these veterans and all of those who have fallen in military service to our nation during times of war by flying the United States flag at half-staff attending the ceremony or pausing for a moment of silence at 12:00 noon in remembrance of their heroic sacrifice. Therefore, Harry has signed and caused the seal of the city of Prescott to be affixed this day, 7th day of June, 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Hi.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I appreciate it. And I want to make sure that everybody from Prescott and Yavapai County recognizes this day, ceremony that we will be putting on at noon at the county courthouse grounds across from Whiskey Row, where these two veterans, in addition to three other veterans from Yavapai County, will be added to this plaque for their service in Iraq and Afghanistan. And during the course of our research over the last year, we found 27 additional veterans, going all the way back to World War I, who were inadvertently admitted from the original plaque, which was dedicated in 1991, that lists 155 other veterans who have given their lives. So I hope you can attend, and if not, I hope you will appreciate this effort and the recognition for these brave men.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one presentation from the Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Neil Sneller, and I'm the membership director for the Prescott Chamber of Commerce. This weekend, the chamber is hosting our Territorial Days Arts and Crafts Show. Everyone's invited to attend and enjoy over 100 arts and craft vendors. And June 25th and 26th, we are hosting the 35th Annual Bluegrass Festival, sponsored by Lamb Chevrolet, and it's worth noting that we are one of the only free bluegrass festivals left in the nation. The music begins at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, right in front of the chamber. And then this month's mixer is Thursday, June 23, and that's hosted by Prescott Frontier Days at the rodeo grounds, and this is a Quad City Mixer. Well, our chamber continues to grow with these new members. Barefoot Chaplain Intervention Services, Dale and Susan with Realty One, English Garden Tea Room, Inspect It First, Jim Stabs with HomeSmart, Jungle Cat Heating and Cooling, Lazy Boy Home Furnishing, Montana BBQ, Prescott Compound Pharmacy, Solano's Hermanos Coffee, The French Hen, The Pine Cone, and finally Wander Media Group. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. First agenda item.
Consent agenda.
Consent, yeah.
Consent agenda. Item A, approval of minutes for the city council meetings held on May 12, May 17, and May 26, 2016. Item B, adoption of resolution number 43291538, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona through the Arizona State Forester for the protection of forest, wild, and rural lands and structures. Approval of purchase, approval to purchase 15 each replacement smart bin control boxes from Technologic Corporation in the amount of $17,755.86, city contract number 2016-303, Yavapai County Free Library District Automation Fund. Item D, approval of submission of an application for a U.S. Department of Justice COPS Hiring Program Grant to fund three entry-level police officer positions for three years. Grant 75%, general fund 25%. Item E, approval of amendment number one to city contract number 2016-175A1, an agreement with Stanley Consultants Incorporated for Engineering Services for the Carlton Alarkin Pavement and Reconstruction Project in amount not to exceed $19,100 Streets Fund. Item F, approval of purchase of UPS battery backup installation and electrical services from Titan Power in the amount of $10,052.86 using state of Arizona contract number ADSPO12-026687, pricing city contract number 2016-307, cost allocated to various funds. And item G, approval of purchase of airport ARV truck radio equipment from Durham Communications in the amount of $11,534.17 using state of Arizona contract number ADSPO13-036881, pricing city contract number 2016-308, grant fund 97.5% and airport fund 2.5%.
Do I have a motion?
I move.
Jim, please.
Thank you, Steve. I move to approve consent agenda items 1A through 1G.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, second vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Item two.
Item two, liquor license consent agenda. Mayor and council, on today's liquor license consent agenda, there are two, or three applications for a Series 15 Special Event Liquor License, the Yavapai Big Brothers, Big Sisters, the 2016 Prescott Rodeo Dance, the Prescott Frontier Days Community Service Foundation, and item C, 2016 World's Oldest Radio, sorry, Rodeo, Prescott Frontier Days Incorporated. The applications for these three events have been determined to be in compliance with city requirements and are being recommended for approval.
Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve liquor applications 2A through 2C.
Second.
Yeah, a motion, a second vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Okay, regular agenda.
Regular agenda, item 3A, public hearing and consideration of a Series 15 Special Event Liquor License application for the Whiskey Row Street Dance applicant Gerald Suscock for the Boys and Girls Club of Central Arizona. Mayor and council, this is a request for a Series 15 Special Event Liquor License for the Whiskey Row Street Dance to be held at the 100 block of Montezuma Street on July 2, 2016. Since 2001, the Whiskey Row Street Dance has been held on Montezuma Street, following the parade and boot race on a Saturday associated with other Independence Day celebrations. Since 2004, the liquor sales associated with the event have ended at 11:00 p.m. or 12:00 a.m., four times at 11:00 p.m. and seven times at 12:00 a.m., with the exception of 2015, when alcohol sales were ended at 10:00 p.m. in order to address concerns raised by downtown bar owners that the late hours of the operation adversely affected their businesses. The city council discussed potential restrictions for downtown special event timeframes as part of a series of discussions that took place between October 2014 and July 2015. No formal action was taken to restrict the hours for downtown events, as each event liquor sales requires council approval, including the timeframe for the service. The event promoter for the Whiskey Row Street Dance has requested alcohol sales end at 12:00 a.m. The Special Events Committee has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance. However, due to prior year concerns pertaining to the hours of operation, final approval of the event's permit is dependent upon the city council's decision on the liquor license application. And I believe the promoter is here? Yes, in the back. If we have any questions, or if you have any questions.
Okay, questions, comments from the council? No.
We meet again. Mayor, council, I'm Dave Michelson from the Palace Restaurant Saloon on historic Whiskey Row. I guess I'll speak for all the bars and restaurants on Whiskey Row. Years ago, when, I'm gonna use Kendall's name, even though he's here, when he was running it with the J.C., as they ended at 8 o'clock, and over the years, it's gone later and later. Last year was 10 o'clock, which we feel still is too late, but we're willing to accept that, but we're certainly not willing to accept midnight. There's a couple of reasons, aside from the restaurants that are, the bars that are there year-round, paying sales tax 365 days a year, and a huge contributor to the sales tax in the city, I would say, is the restaurant and bars. That's the busiest day of the year for those businesses. And speaking for myself, it doesn't affect me as much as the bars, because I do have food, too, but I certainly support their feelings about ending it at 10. And the other thing is, too, we don't know what kind of, how they're handling their liquor in there as far as restrictions, or how they're monitoring people over drinking. So what happens is, if they're not being diligent, like we have to be all the time, because our liquor licenses are on the line every single day, if we're not, you know, that thing ends at midnight, then all those people get turned loose to the bars, and we have to deal with all those people. You know, yeah, we won't let them in if they're drunk, but we've still got to go through the process of screening everybody after midnight and dealing with them. So that's another issue that we're concerned about. So we feel that, you know, 10 o'clock is appropriate, and then if, and then if the liquor's served till midnight, by the time they get cleaned up, it's 2:00 in the morning. So then the street's lost the entire time anyway. So anyway, that's our feeling. We feel 10 o'clock is certainly a reasonable time to end the event, and certainly not midnight. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment. Go ahead. You know, Dave, you guys pay, what, $682 a year?
$662.
$662, I'm sorry about that.
That's another topic, but it's just you brought it up.
I inflated that figure. Let's hope you don't end up paying that in the future.
That would be nice. Can we get that in?
But the situation is, is that you guys are paying that, and it's going into attracting tourists to this area. And I think that because of that, because of the success of something like the Street Dance, is dependent somewhat on you guys paying that money in, so we can attract tourists to go to your bar, as well as the Street Dance, I think that you should have a say in this situation, and your comments are well-taken. Thank you.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and city council members. I just want to cover a few points, and I will be under the five-minute limit. The Whiskey Row Street Dance started as an attraction to keep people downtown back in '01, it was. I came on the scene in about '02, and it had lost money its first two years. So we, I joined the J.C.s, we made it work. The J.C.s went bankrupt statewide, I think it was in '07, when it changed over to the Eagles, and that happened three weeks before the event, and we put it on. We've always been 11 or 12, but there was a massive upheaval last year, and because we shut at 10, my company lost $12,000, and we almost went bankrupt. We can't afford to do that again this year, with the 4th of July expense of my company putting out $25,000 to be able to pull off the fireworks. If we don't have the midnight, we're not going to be able to have the Street Dance at all this year, because we can't take the financial risk of two events getting rained out, or something happening, as we had to cancel Cinco de Mayo this year. Let me tell you some positive aspects, because all you ever hear is the negative. The Whiskey Row Street Dance by the retail merchants, which are the majority of the row, 100% vote for this. They have problems with car shows that shut down the row from 9:00 to 5:00. So they have a lot of events that conflict with them, so I don't know how the votes for those go, but they love this event. Several of the owners wrote on the application I turned in that this event needs to happen. It's great for the city of Prescott, and it's part of a tradition of what goes on downtown. The capacity on the row does not meet the needs of the tourists we have in town, just like when we did Best Fest, we didn't have enough hotel rooms either. This is that one day of the year where the Whiskey Row Street Dance becomes a holding pen, whereas, Dave said, we release people at 12:00. Well, most of those people that are being released at 12:00 have had one, maybe two beers, because most of those people at that time are coming off the Whiskey Row Street, excuse me, the rodeo dance and coming to my event at that point. Last year, our attendance was 387 people, because the number-one comment that we heard after we shut at 9:30 to do the last call and all that stuff was that, who goes to a party on the 4th of July that ends at 10:00? We complied with the merchant sign-off, and we had over 90% of the merchants on the row. We only had three vote no, 34 voted yes for the event. We provide increased services, which I think to that night downtown are absolutely needed. We bring 15 porta-potties downtown. Before the Street Dance, the merchants were having problems with urination and defecation in their doorways, especially the old book nook when it's there. That's Ian Russell's gallery now. It's a little alcove, and people couldn't get into the bars to use the restroom, so they went wherever they could go. Alley's were getting bombed then, too. We provide two police officers to the event. The officers love the event. We create a barrier, as it would be for anybody leaving a bar, running into a street that would have been opened by pedestrianizing Whiskey Row. It's also a fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club this year. They are at max capacity right now. They have a waitlist for their summer program. The Street Dance is important for tourism. It is a 15-year-old event, and we've had generations now come to this event. The extra capacity we provide provides a level of service that tourists in most town don't get, bathrooms, porta-potties, and availability to find a police officer on Whiskey Row at the gate of our event. To enjoy Whiskey Row on rodeo weekend and be part of this tradition, people travel from all over the state. I get phone calls about this all the time, on what time is it ending, and that's been the major question and problem we've had addressing. Also, if we can't establish a consistent time of the Street Dance, we can't attract sponsorships which help pay for the ever-increasing expenses of running events downtown, as the city moves to privatization and doesn't provide services to event promoters anymore. Like to let you know also, my company and I have been doing events in this town now for 14 years. I have never taken one penny of city sales tax from bed tax. We've only added to it. And last, I want to let you know, we talk about sales tax, and my company pays a lot of it. We just paid $850 for a five-hour event at Mile High Middle School, not including the rent, not including all the other local businesses, from Just Ask Rentals to Trafficade, that we hire and bring in and pay thousands of dollars to. So there's this, like, smaller economy on the event cycle right now.
30 seconds.
Thank you. So if you want to try to rent equipment for any of these weekends now, most of it's all gone because of events like me. So we provide jobs, people coming in and setting up. So with that said, I really urge you, last year, we couldn't, we cannot go 10 or 11 o'clock, that we just don't have the people coming in from the rodeo. We have to go to midnight. I'm not sitting here applying for two or one, I'm applying for where I think we can get to a break even. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Looks like we got Dave come back down for a rebuttal.
I used my whole time. Just real briefly, you know, we're not against the charity. We, as hospitality, we donate to charities all year long, all of us, whether money or in-kind or whatever, so we're certainly for charities, and we appreciate the charities. As far as 90% or 75% of the people signing off on Whiskey Row, two bars signed off. One told me he did it because he's gonna get it anyway, meaning Steve. The other one's not even in business anymore, and everybody else in that street's not even open at night when this event's going on, so they don't really care. So that was a little bit misleading that they all signed off, and they really, they might be behind it, I don't know. I'm not gonna dispute that, but they're not even open anyway, so they have no, you know, nothing in the game. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Matt Bressard, Matt Sloan, Mayor, Protem, and council. Just a few comments I want to make on this briefly was, there was a number of years when the Street Dance did go on, and it started at 3:00, and it would end by 8:00 or 8:30, and it seemed to work really well. That was the intent, I think, of the original Street Dance, was to keep people downtown after the boot race and the parade, and since then, it did get later and later, so just wanted to kind of pass that along. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? One minute.
I'd like to address Matt's comment. We have gotten later, you're absolutely right, but when we started the Street Dance, there were 50 people in the parade, and the boot race was 50 people. Now it's hundreds of entries, and we don't get the road. You start our setup, which takes three, three and a half hours, sound, lights, stage, all that, until about 3:00 in the afternoon now. So there's no way for us to set it up and go. This is where we're at. We get the row usually ready to go and open at about 6:00, 6:30 is where we look. Last night, last time, we got open at 5:45, and we rushed, rushed, rushed.
I have just a question, because I know I talked to Joe and you guys last year about this. God knows we talked about this last year. Weren't we gonna move this down a little bit, so the boot race could go on and you could set up?
Well, they've gone as far down as they can. It's the parade that pushes us later, because of the number of entries.
No, I mean, not push the time, but push the location down, so you could set up while these other things are going on. Did I, I don't know where that one went, Joe.
Councilman Lozelle, it still has the same effect, the parade, closing those streets, and the boot race, you still wouldn't be able to set up properly, and that's what pushes that starting time back.
Councilwoman Ohr, correction, Wilcox?
Yeah, I wanted to note that we just approved a Series 15 Special Event Liquor License for the Prescott Rodeo Dance under the consent agenda, and that event goes until midnight. It's just down the street at the BMO, 8 Harris Bank parking lot. It doesn't seem fair to me that we should restrict the hours to an earlier hour on Whiskey Row. They ought to be the same.
I could say one thing to that, I could. Come on, Joe.
That's a private parking lot, it's not a public street.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ohr?
Yes, I, Kendall, I was wondering if the downtown partnership has taken a position on this?
No.
Okay.
Mayor, council, if I could, for one second, just to, we wanted to add that we are trying to attempt to move this event to the Mile High Middle School. to attempt to move this event to the Mile High Middle School football field for next year, to take some of that pressure off the street closures. That's not etched in stone, but that's certainly something that we're looking at.
And I've talked to the superintendent of schools, and he indicated that he's going to try and support you on that. So any further public comment? Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second. Vote, please.
Councilwoman Orr?
Oh, wait, yeah. Hold on just one. I want to read this one more time. I'm sorry. We're approving it to close at...
No, this is just to close.
This is just to close. Okay, great. I wanted to make sure I didn't hear that. Thank you.
Passes unanimously.
Do you have a second motion?
Mayor, I move to forward the Whiskey Row Street Dance Special Event Liquor License Application Number 16-0040-S to the Arizona State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval between the hours of 4:00 p.m. to midnight.
Second. Okay, I got a motion, a second. Vote, please.
Councilman Shiski voted?
No, I didn't. I just pressed the no.
So you got to get the green off there.
Okay. Passes four to three. Councilman Shiski, Councilwoman Orr, and Councilman Lozelle dissenting.
Item B.
Item 2B, or 3B, Public Hearing and Consideration of a New Liquor License Application for a Series 18 In-State Craft Distillery from Dana Anita Murdoch, applicant for Thumbutt Distillery located at 400 North Washington. Mayor and Council, this is a request for a new series, a new license for a Series 18 In-State Craft Distillery liquor license. The Police Department has reviewed the application and is in compliance with state law, and the Community Development Department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with zoning requirements and building safety issues. The application and license fees have been paid. The application has been posted at the proposed location for the required 20 days, and no public comments have been received. And I believe the applicant is in attendance?
Come on down.
Hello.
Tell us about your story.
Well, we've been open at that location now for two years. And the issue at hand is the change in our license from a Series 1, which was a state producer license, to a Series 18, which is a new category for craft distillery. And so when that happened, we had to apply for a new state license and a new city license because this is something that comes under the auspices of the state, not the fed, not our federal license. So it's actually, there's no change in operation. There is no change in what we've been doing the last two years. But we had to go through this whole process again because we changed from a 1 to the new craft distillery, which is an 18. We have received approval from the Health Department because in the meantime, they changed and required a grease trap in almost all establishments, even though it's just alcohol. We've got that installed. It's been inspected and approved by the Health Department. So that's what's going on with us right now.
So it's just legal housekeeping?
Yes. And I think we've done it. We've worked with Dana Delion, the city. We've worked with Bud and all that, and we've worked with Laurel, and I think we're good. And we want to reopen this Friday.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the council?
Is your Scotch still in? I'm sorry, your Highland. Can't call it Scotch.
Well, and now we can't call it Central Highlands because the federal Alcohol Tobacco Tax Bureau thinks that the word Highland only applies to Scotland.
But is it still in demand?
Yeah. And we just won two national gold medals. It was in the Courier. I don't know if any of you saw it.
Congratulations.
With our blended grain whiskey. And this is the biggest competition in the country.
Great.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Do I have a motion?
May I recommend to move, I move to close the public hearing?
Second. Okay, a motion, a second vote, please.
I only pressed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Passes unanimously.
I'm still new.
Do you have a second motion?
I do. I will do this. Let's see. I'm having a hard time today with this. Sorry about that. Here we are. I move to approve recommendation for a liquor license application number 18133001 for a Series 18 in-house craft distillery for Thumbutt Distillery, award-winning, located at 14, I'm sorry, 400 North Washington.
Second. Okay, I'm going to vote you on a second. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Item C.
Item 3C, Public Hearing and Consideration of a New Liquor License Application for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License from Randy D. Nations, applicant for Far From Folsom located at 214 South Montezuma Street. This is a request for a new liquor license for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License. The Police Department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with state law, and the Community Development Department has reviewed the application and found it to be in compliance with zoning requirements and building safety issues. The application and license fees have been paid. The application has been posted at the proposed location for the required 20 days, and no public comments were received. The applicant is in attendance.
Well, tell us a little bit about your business.
Thank you. Evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and Council members. Far From Folsom is a restaurant themed on all-American menu, Johnny Cash-themed, Waylon Jennings, country legends. We're really looking at a dual-purpose venue there in that a restaurant, finer dining, maybe up, is in the progression in a few months, but really a outdoor patio dining, indoor dining, and open for lunch and dinner, and some late-night menus as well. We're also very excited to be part of downtown and the Whiskey Row area and the events. I would like to say this, just coming and viewing this for the first time. I'm born and raised in Arizona, but moved here from Austin, Texas. And Austin is known for its festivals, for its events. I can tell you, one of the things that drew us to relocate to the Prescott area is the, kind of, the events, the festivals, the community involvement. And Far From Folsom, all the members involved will be highly involved in the community. We're working right now, discussions with Aid for Veterans, a cancer charity called Love, Hope, Strength Foundation. So we'll be doing a lot of charity events and invite everyone to come out for those to support local charities as well.
Any questions, comments from the council?
Just welcome.
Thank you. Very much.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions from the public? Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to cl, oh, go ahead.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, a motion, a second. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Second motion?
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license application number 12133660 for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Far From Folsom located at 214 South Montezuma Street.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Item D.
It's not a liquor license application.
Pardon?
Not that happened.
Actually, item D, there's been a request to pull item 3D from the agenda to be brought back at a future meeting.
Okay. Item E.
Item E. Adoption of Ordinance Number 4980-1518, amending city code Title II, Ordinance Number 4981-1519, amending city code Title VIII, Ordinance Number 4982-1520, amending city code Title X, Ordinance Number 49831521, amending city code Title 16, Ordinance Number 4984-1522, creating a new Title XVII and adopting the general engineering standards, and Resolution Number 4333-1542, adopting the general engineering standards as a public record. And I do have to read the ordinance into the ordinances into the record by title only, so. Ordinance Number 4980-1518, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title II, Chapter 2-1, Public Works Department, Section 2-1-9, Utilities Division, abbreviations and definitions of the Prescott City Code, adding a severance clause and providing for penalties. Ordinance Number 4981-1519, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title VIII, Chapter 8-1, Sections 8-1-1 and 8-1-4, and amending Chapter 8-2, Sections 8-2-1, 8-2-4, 8-2-5, 8-2-6, 8-2-7, 8-2-8, 8-2-10, and 8-2-17, adding a severance clause and providing for penalties. Ordinance Number 4982-1520, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title X, Development Regulations, Chapter 10-1, Land Development Code, amending Article VI, General Development Standard of the Land Development Code, amending Article VII, Subdivision and Land Split Standards of the Land Development Code, amending Article VIII, Review Bodies of the Land Development Code, amending Article IX, Administrative Procedures of the Land Development Code, and amending Article XI, Definition of the Land Development Code. Ordinance Number 4983-1521, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title XV, deleting Chapter 16-1, Standard Specifications and Detailed Drawings and Uniforms Specifications for Public Works Construction, deleting Chapter 16-2, Drainage Regulations, deleting Chapter 16-3, Drainage Criteria Manual, amending Chapter 16-4, 2007 City of Prescott Construction Site Erosion and Sediment, amending Chapter 16-5, 2007 City of Prescott Legal Discharge and Illegal Discharge and Illegal Connections Stormwater Code, amending Chapter 16-6, 2007 City of Prescott Post-Construction Stormwater Runoff Code, and adding a severance clause and providing for penalties. And Ordinance Number 4984-1522, an ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, creating a new Title XVII, Chapter XVII, Sections XVII-1 and XVII-2 of the Prescott City Code, adopting general engineering standards for the City of Prescott, adopting penalties for violation of Title XVII, Chapter XVII, and adopting a severance clause. And there's just one note on that last ordinance, Ordinance Number 4984-1522. On the second page of the ordinance, it refers to Section 10-1-2. That was a typo. It should be Section XVII.
That's what I thought.
And you didn't take a breath that whole time, did you?
I'm done.
And take a drink of water, too. Henry?
I forgot why I'm here. Good evening, the Honorable Mayor and Council, Henry Hatch, Public Works. It's really, we're pleased to be here before you. It's eight years in the working. The last 15, 16 months, staff has been working hard, thousands of hours, including my own, has been spent in putting the standards together, meeting with stakeholders time and time again, and so many meetings with YCCA, RUDC, Planning and Zoning Council. I couldn't be more pleased to say that we started from 0% support and agreement. We went all the way to 99.9% agreement with YCCA, the executive director of, you know, Sandy Griffiths, who's here. I can't even describe how helpful she has been to us and made this document what it is, a great document. From 99.99%, at the last council meeting, we lost a point. And since then, we have been working with her and tried to come up with a compromise. I am pleased to say that this afternoon, she actually brought us a cake. And I think the cake says it the other way around. This is as good as it gets. I don't know what this number is, but it's very, very big.
So Sandy has her cake, and she's going to eat it, too.
Yes, sir. So you only get the picture. We get the cake. If I may, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask Sandy to come here. And Gounrowich, of our staff, has been really working on this for eight years. She would, after Sandy, give you a brief summary of what we have gone through. So.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council, good afternoon. We started this dance, Public Works and the industry, almost 300 days ago. And had it not been for Public Works continually and constantly, weekly and almost daily, wanting to change the standards, we would have been through this months ago. They wanted to change words. They wanted to take out words. They wanted to add words. They wanted to go from "may" to "will." They wanted to go from "rare." They wanted to go case by case. They wanted to remove tolerances, of all things. They wanted to add sentences. I know, I was beside myself. I didn't quite know how to handle them. We would no sooner leave meetings. I'd go back to my office, and here would come the emails. "I have another thought. I have an idea. What if we looked at this? Look at what Maricopa County does." But we got through it, didn't we, Henry?
Yes, we did.
Seriously, it was all YCCA. I take the blame, guys. It was a process. It was educational. It was professional. And as city representatives, I hope that you all are as proud of this document as we are to work with Henry and the awesome Public Works staff. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart, guys. You are all top drawer in my book. And this has given us a better, more profound understanding and respect for not only city employees, but the industry. So I'm here. I was proud to give you a bajillion percent, and I do hope that you unanimously support this document because it needs to be. We have arrived. So thank you.
Thank you so very much for all your help.
Councilman Lozelle?
Thank you, Mayor. Sandy, I was looking forward to another 45-minute discussion today, and you thoroughly disappointed me.
All right. Mayor and Council, that was more the kumbaya moment. I'm kind of more the voice of reason. So, you know, the last time we were here, it really came down to, are we going to allow PVC pipe for water, or are we not? So I'm here to tell you the solution that we came up with. And we did, we did spend a lot of hours talking about this since the last time we met. And the staff solution was to come up with this detail. It's a standard detail that we'll add to the, to our book of standard details that would be specific to Prescott in the cases where we would allow the installation of PVC pipe. And when we do allow the installation of PVC pipe, there are conditions here that would have to be met, including inspections, inspection of the pipe material before it's placed in the ground, the specific type of pipe, DR-14, this type of tracer wire, etc. And a lot of these conditions are actually put out by the PVC pipe industry themselves as to the installation that is required for their material. So that was the ultimate solution. We did change some of the language in the document. Originally, we said that the use of PVC pipe would be considered on a case-by-case basis. That's, those are Sandy's words. And instead, we changed it to say that the preferred material would be ductile iron pipe, and the following materials would be considered on an individual project basis with approval of the city engineer as an alternate material, the use of PVC pipe when installed in accordance with the new standard detail 200P-2. So we do believe that we have reached a compromise, if you will. I don't know how flexible engineers actually are, but we believe that this detail will help set the standard anyway for the discussions that will take place on an individual project basis. And as any of you that know Sandy know that anytime you're discussing one thing, a lot of other things come up. So while we were discussing water, the use of pipe in storm drain also came up. And so we modified the language also relating to stormwater pipe to read similarly to that of water, where it says that the preferred material is reinforced concrete pipe, and the following materials could be considered on an individual project basis with approval of the city engineer as an alternative material to use HDPE pipe. of the city engineer as an alternative material to use HDPE pipe. So again, we've attempted to be flexible in both areas. All of our staff is obviously here to answer questions, and Henry asked me to remind you that because this is a new document, we will be back in one year, and we'll let you know how it went with changes to the document, I'm sure. Are there any questions?
Councilwoman Blair.
Just one, Gwen. I'm glad that we've got to this point, and I can take off the "do not answer" list of Sandy when she calls.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Orr.
Yes, I'd just like to say thank you, because I know last time we had the discussion, there was a little bit of a stall. And this is very good news, because you found a solution, and that's what we wanna be about, a solution.
Absolutely.
So thank you for doing that. I really appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
Mayor, Protem, and Council, I'm Alan Cox from Nashville, Tennessee area. I work for the Ductile Iron Pipe Research Association. And I'd like to comment on the fact that your engineering staff has been doing an excellent job. Iron pipe is a hundred and fifty to almost two-hundred years old in a lot of areas in the United States. It's a very sustainable product, and it is sustainable from the standpoint, it's made from recycled ferrous scrap, and when you actually use it and pump through it, it has an energy savings, which means you're also gonna use a lot less electricity, and your carbon footprint's gonna be lower. You cannot put in a more sustainable product than what has been going on here for an awfully, awfully long time. So when it comes to making a decision, that is the right decision. And I know it's all been already decided, and I'm somewhat belabored here, belated, excuse me, but I just wanna have a comment, and I thank you much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do you have a comment?
Just a quick, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna thank all of you for your patience. Sandy, just community development, legal, and our staff, the ones that are here, you know, Steve Oros, Charles Andrews, Craig Dossett, and many people. Gwen Rowich especially. She's one person that actually has been working on this for eight years. She has threatened me that if it doesn't pass, that... So I wanna thank Gwen especially for her patience and working on this, really all of us, thousands of hours. We certainly seek your support on that. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have to link the motion process here. Who wants to start it?
Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt Ordinance Number 4980-1518, amending City Code Title II.
Second. Have a motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt Ordinance Number 4981-1519, amending City Code Title VIII.
Second.
You have a motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt Ordinance Number 4982-1520, amending City Code Title X.
Second.
Have a motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve Ordinance Number 4983-1521, amending City Code Title XVI.
Second.
Have a motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt Ordinance Number 4984-1522, creating a new Title XVII and adopting the general engineering standards.
Second.
Have a motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution Number 4333-1542, adopting the general engineering standards as a public record.
Second.
Have a motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Next item.
Item 3F, award of city contract number 2016-297 to Earth Resources Corporation for construction of the Autumn Breeze Street Improvement Project in the amount of $44,982 Streets Fund.
Thank you. Good evening, Steve Oros, Public Works, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is to award a construction contract to Earth Resources Corporation for a small roadway improvement project on Autumn Breeze, including a new valley gutter, various curb improvements, drainage improvements, and a rebuilding of an existing catch basin to improve drainage in the area. For some reason, historically, in this general area, we've had numerous drainage complaints during monsoons, almost like clockwork. And we've developed this project over the past eleven months to improve the drainage in the area, to reduce the potential for overtopping the street and other issues in the area. The project was out to bid April 24th, May 1st publicly. Small projects, we didn't have a mandatory pre-bid meeting, but we did get four bids on the project on May 12th, and Earth Resources was the low bid that we received, just slightly below the engineer's estimate. We've received confirmation of the bid, and all the verifications have been determined that the bid was balanced and responsive. It's a small project, so we only have about thirty days to construct it. And with your approval tonight, next week, they will be getting started and finished, hopefully, before monsoons. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2016-297.
Second. Have a motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 3G, approval of Water Service Agreement Number, Agreement Number 14-009, city contract number 2016-292 with Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University of Campus, for campus development.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Leslie Grazer, Water Resource Manager for the City of Prescott. I'd like to start with a map. This is a location map for the Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University. This evening, we do have Ms. Barb Munderlow, the Assistant Director of Business, Budget, and Planning, I believe, with us this evening. Yes, thank you for coming. The city has provided water service to this campus since 1976. The agenda item today is to place fifty-five acre feet of alternative water supplies into contract in accordance with City Code and in accordance with the policy adopted May 3rd, 2016, the water policy. The amounts that this contract holds is forty-nine point five acre feet for three residential residence halls, point six acre feet for a library learning center, three point seven acre feet for a student center, and one point two acre feet for an academic building. On May 10th, the Water Issues Committee recommended forwarding this item to council. And I believe that's all I have on this topic, so if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to do so.
Councilwoman Lozelle.
Thank you, Mayor. Leslie, what's our annual alternative water portfolio amount?
Let me change things here in just a moment. This is one of the pages from the recently adopted policy. Is that in focus? Okay, doesn't look very focused to me. So Councilwoman Lozelle, it was four hundred and seventy-nine acre feet. The upper block has a contractual obligation, and then the institutional development block, which is the fifty-five acre feet for Embry-Riddle. After those two volumes were subtracted, and then it brought the remaining pool to three hundred and twenty-four acre feet, and it was divided into three categories, market, and then the workforce, multifamily, duplex apartments, and commercial. And you can see the quantities, one hundred and twenty-five acre feet, one hundred, and ninety-nine acre feet, respectively. So this was identified, this was, I guess I should say, the first residence hall that's already constructed and basically through the process, was already underway when the suspension hit. So dialogues opened up to understand the seven-year plan of the campus, and resulting was this breakdown that you see in policy.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not looking to throw a wrench into anything for Embry-Riddle, 'cause they're a great thing to have for the city. I just wanted to know the whole pool, and no pun intended, of water, and what we've got left. Is it a first-come, first-served after this?
Excuse me just a second. Just to be clear, this is an absolute quantity of water. It's not an annual quantity of water. So this is the quantity, and Leslie can describe, and certainly you'll recall, the procedure that we've been going through.
Right.
So what we do have is the upper block, the contractual obligation, and the institutional is put off aside with a timeframe on it to work with those parties. As I stated, for Embry-Riddle, the fifty-five acre feet is before you today. The remainder, there were projects that were caught up in the temporary suspension. We know those as Exhibit A. And so we know who those are, and those quantities have been packaged and held until they come in through this calendar year. And then anything that remained, for example, in the market column, the one hundred and twenty-five acre feet, we were looking at potentially a hundred acre feet leaving that column right off the bat when that project was ready, leaving about twenty-five acre feet for new projects that were coming in. And we've had a few that have come in in that category since the adoption.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments from the council? Any public comment? Okay, do you have a motion?
I move to approve Water Service Agreement Number 14-009, city contract number 2016-292.
Second.
Have a motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Next item.
Item 3H, adoption of Resolution Number 4324-1533, approving the amended and restated effluent sales agreement with the Club of Prescott Lakes, LLC, city contract number
Okay, once again, I'd like to start with a location map. This is the club at Prescott Lakes, and I apologize if the color isn't very good, but I think you can pick out the greens here and the fairways of the golf course. We've worked with Mr. Greg Paydock on this topic, the club's general manager, and I'm not sure if he made it this evening. He was hoping to, pending his schedule, of course. This is an eighteen-hole golf course, being served with reclaimed water since 2002. The existing twenty-year contract expired in 2016. Both parties have discussed contract changes. For the golf course, they were looking, of course, to renew. They were also asking if they would be able to shift some supplies from the winter months into the summer months without a net increase in their contract, so no more than five hundred acre feet, it stayed the same. For the city, when the city looked at this contract, and of course had discussions with the other party, the city sought to have it renewed every ten years. We've learned that with a twenty-year contract, that a lot of things change. And so if we can touch base with each other every ten years, I think both parties will benefit. There was also some other contract language that needed to be updated, such as insurance, reclaimed water quality, inspection of infrastructure, and then we also looked at pricing, of course. So with the shifting of supplies into the summer months, that does require the city to run its recovery well at the recharge facility. So how that looks is the pricing for the base allocation and the supplemental quantities is three hundred and fifty-four acre feet and five hundred and fifty-four acre feet, respectively. So generally, the, the club will be using water from the base, not likely to often dip into the supplemental, because of the shift in more supplies into the summertime. So this item was heard before the Water Issues Committee on May 10th, and they recommended forwarding this to council. And then with the golf courses, of course, the city owns a golf course as well, and I wanted to reference for you the Prescott City Code 2-1-57, which prescribes effluent rates unless otherwise provided in a separate agreement approved by council, such as this one. Further, the effluent rate charged to any municipal golf course shall be no more than the effluent rate charged to any other golf course receiving city effluent supplies. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilwoman Blair.
Yes, Leslie, just one question, that noting the fact that we're gonna have to use our well, is the energy cost and the ongoing cost of operating that going to be pushed on to Prescott Lakes?
I do believe so. We worked, of course, with Public Works on this, because they handle all things infrastructure, water movement, as well as energy costs. So those things were looked at. What you're, what we're seeing is about a thirteen-dollar increase in the base and a sixty-three-dollar increase in the supplemental.
So they would be inclusive. Okay, though? Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Leslie, you stated five hundred and fifty-four. Our packet says four hundred and fifty-four.
I'm sorry, I didn't put it... Four hundred and fifty-four.
Four hundred and fifty-four, okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Other than the city golf course and Prescott Lakes, are there any other consumers of effluent or purchasers of effluent?
Yes, ma'am. They're, it's now called Capital Canyon. It used to be called Hacienda. And they're a golf course as well, so no big difference there. It's set up differently in their contract, and I probably shouldn't go into the details, 'cause it would probably bore everybody, but it's interesting, it's different. The other one would be Hanson's, it used to be Yavapai Materials, and so water is sent to that sand and gravel industrial user. And then, of course, there's a standpipe at the wastewater treatment plant for contractors who need to come in and use supplies.
Are all the golf courses charged the same rate?
They are slightly different, but generally, they're about the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Anything from the public?
Good evening. I'm Ralph Hess from Prescott, Arizona. I have some concerns that hopefully you'll be able to alleviate. In looking at the memo today and the reference to Prescott City Code, Section 2157, I note that after having done a rate study, the city decided to go ahead and set a rate that's much higher than is the rate pursuant to the terms of this contract. For 2016, the rate's gonna be seven hundred and four dollars per acre foot. Beginning next year, it's gonna be seven hundred and eighty-three dollars per acre foot, and I suspect it's gonna go up in years subsequent. In the memo, it makes reference to this contract's gonna yield about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for actual use of three hundred and sixty-five acre feet. That apparently is the historical use, but according to the rates, rate statutory or the code rate that you have, that's a hundred and twenty-seven more, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-five cents less than the code rate. So basically, it appears to me, and this is my concern, after having attended the workshop, for the budget workshop, is that in the wastewater fund, the, it lists the expenditure sources and the revenue sources, and the revenue sources include wastewater service fees and wastewater impact fees. So under the terms of this agreement, if the golf courses, Prescott Lakes Golf Course is gonna get millions of dollars of discounted rate, and Antelope Hills is gonna get even, looks like almost twice that, based on their usage, that they, if the expenses of the wastewater fund are gonna have to be met by wastewater service fees and including effluent sales, then this millions of dollars of discount that you're giving to these golf courses to meet the expenses, look like they're gonna have to be made up by all of us who are paying wastewater fees, because those, those expenses are gonna have to be met. And if the golf courses aren't paying their fair share, we're gonna end up picking it up. And that's a concern to me, that perhaps you'll be able to resolve.
Would you like me to respond, Mayor? I'm not an expert on the water and wastewater study, but the seven hundred dollars per acre foot that you referenced is related to, at the standpipe. And so those are folks we don't have in contract already. So I think that would be the difference, and maybe that was not understood within the code. But the, and it should be understood, actually, because it specifically states that it is for the standpipe users versus the contract users.
Well, I noticed, though, that in that current effluent users contract... Well, I noticed, though, that in that current effluent users' contract study that was done, that others, it says Hanson, Prescott Lakes, Antelope Hills, others are paying, and they have smaller amounts, but they're paying $500 an acre foot. I guess Hanson's paying the same, 354. But if that's the code provision, provides for $700 per acre foot, why do the golf courses get a discount of more than half? What's set forth in Prescott City Code Section 2157?
Is that something you can answer right now?
I don't think I could. I'd have to look at the entire wastewater, the rate study.
Mayor, I can comment, and the comment is that this contract dates from 1996. And so there was a long-term agreement put in place for a 20-year initial term plus two additional 20-year term. There was an understanding that the city was going to provide effluent, and the golf course is going to use effluent. In that, certainly, there is language which talks about price, pricing adjustments. However, it has been the consistent policy that those pricing adjustments have been consumer price index basis. So that is the basis, that has been the basis, and that is the basis that is recommended. Again, a long-term investment, a major investment in this community, and that was the deal.
Do you understand what he said?
Well, I understood what he, what he said, but I think the city has an obligation to set reasonable rates. That's what the state statutes provide, and frankly, it's your governmental function to set rates. And I raised this question with the attorneys at the, at the budget workshop, but I also have a question as to whether this council combined future councils to an agreement regarding the governmental function of setting rates, particularly when this discount is going to, apparently, or at least we don't have the answer yet, is going to impact all of the wastewater fees that the rest of us in Prescott who pay wastewater fees are going to have to pay in order to cover the expenses of millions of dollars in discount that are being provided to the, to the golf courses.
Counselor Chiswick?
Ralph, I think the economic benefit of Prescott Lakes and of Capital Canyon and of Antelope Hills far outweighs the detriment of not charging them, let's say, rack rate.
I don't know if we have that information, Steve. And you're voting on this contract today.
Leslie?
Mayor Olberg, I think maybe the difference here in that we were not seeing is that this is supplies that have been taken into the wastewater treatment plan and then reclaimed for redistribution. The general community is solely paying for the wastewater that's being removed, you know, through pipes from their homes to the wastewater treatment plant. We're doing additional work on this reclaimed supply, and so I think the pricing would be generally a little different. And also, as I mentioned at the very beginning, we've seen that things change a lot in 20 years. And so with this 10-year contract, it gives them a little more time to adjust themselves because I think the world knows, you know, everything costs more as you go along, and we might also be seeing, I think we're seeing a trend that they've been more efficient with the supply. So in the future, contract will be able to pull back some of that supply as long as they have that time to adjust. So with the pricing as well, they asked us, you know, can we please start in January because of our fiscal, how we operate fiscally is by calendar year? So we'll see that change coming in January. But I think those are some of the points that might help on this topic.
Ms. Palladine, do you want to comment?
I guess, Mayor, just to point out a couple of things. First of all, and I agree with Leslie, that setting, setting rates for sewer service and selling treated effluent are two different things. Selling treated effluent's a proprietary function, it's not a government function, so it's part of a transaction that we're involved in. The agreement, as Craig said, is essentially a 60-year agreement entered into 20 years ago. It goes up in CPI, essentially. This agreement is replacing the second 40 years, or the second 20 and the third 20 years, with this agreement which adjusts the rates. But if we didn't do this current agreement, the old agreement would just simply roll into another 20 years. So this is a better deal for the city than the old agreement that would simply renew by Prescott Lakes choosing to, to renew it for 20 and then another 20. So this is actually a better, a better agreement. And third of all, this sort of, this city certainly has the ability to bind future councils because it's a contract, and contracts oftentimes bind future councils. This contract 20 years ago bound 60 years worth of councils, potentially. And there was one other issue that Mr. Hess brought up. I'm trying to think of what it was. But in any, oh, the other one was that, that the reason we're, we're charging the rate we're charging is because even by adopting this rack rate for treated effluent in a city code, it can't change the terms of a contract. That would actually violate both the Arizona and U.S. constitutions under the contracts clause. Government can't change a contract, a term of a contract by adopting some sort of legislation. So, long story short, is this is, this is a perfectly legal process to go through. Mr. Hess is sort of combining legal arguments with policy views, and from a legal perspective, this is, this is perfectly fine process to go through, acceptable legal process to go through. Question is, is do you want this new contract that's restated, or do we simply renew the old one? That's really, that's the question for the council.
Okay, thanks. We need to go on to some other public comment here, so, does anybody have any questions of Ms. Hess before she sits down? Okay, thanks. Anybody else have public comment?
You predicted I would be here, but at the time, I didn't think I would. Leslie Hoy. I was at the Water Issues Committee, and, and I feel that the city did negotiate the best contract that was possible. It's just really unfortunate that a bad mistake was made in 1996 without understanding what the value of effluent is going to be, and the value of effluent to us as a city is going to increase. The reason I came up here is I was wondering if you could, in the very last part of the contract, Section 29, where it says reuse of lake areas, it seems to say that even if there isn't a golf course anymore, that the Prescott Lakes would still be entitled to the effluent, and I just was wondering if I was reading that correctly. It's 29.1 and, yeah, 29.1.
Probably means you're going to keep the lakes full so we can shoot ducks.
Well, I believe, first of all, I believe that this provision is in the original contract, the old contract. So it was sort of carried through. It's, it's, it's really to cease use of the lakes as in their current form. Doesn't necessarily mean that they wouldn't have, I guess, tanks or something, maybe they could store the water into water with, as opposed to the lakes, although which currently the water, I think, is stored in the lakes and then used to water. But this gives the, the country club or the club the opportunity to do something else with the area of the lakes, and that would have, that would mean they'd have to figure out some other kind of storage for the effluent, but we would continue to, to require to sell the, sell the effluent to the golf course.
Okay, thank you. And then I just have a comment about golf courses in general. I believe across the country, the use of golf courses is decreasing, so we, as a community, should keep that in mind, that we might, we need to invent things that are going to appeal to people. When you think about young people today, they may not even have legs when they get to be my age, because they'll have great big fingers and eyes, but their legs might have gone, they might have atrophied. So we need to think 20 years from now, what kind of entertainment we're going to have for our citizens to attract attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, do you have a motion?
Mayor, I recommend move to adopt Resolution Number 4324-1533.
Second. Do you have a motion, second vote, please?
Passes unanimously.
Next item.
Item 3I, Approval of City Contract Number 2016-296 with Southwest Groundwater Consultants Incorporated in the amount of $104,888, $588 to assess or design long-term monitoring wells for the Big Chino Sub Basin Data Collection and Monitoring Plan Alternative Water Fund.
Okay, for this item, I'd like to start with the city's website. It maintains a page on the Big Chino Water Ranch, and I scroll down a little bit. This contract stems from the Agreement in Principle and the Comprehensive Agreement Number One. So the council did approve in 2010 the Agreement in Principle. It was a conceptual framework which set forth the principles guiding the parties and forming the basis for more detailed future agreements addressing specific terms, including groundwater modeling, groundwater and surface water monitoring, and mitigation if necessary. Following that is down here, Comprehensive Agreement Number One, which was adopted or approved, I guess, by all parties in 2012, and it's an agreement that addresses the monitoring and modeling of the Big Chino Sub Basin. So tonight, we do have Mr. Jim Holt with Southwest Groundwater, I believe, representing the consultant here. A map for this project is also important, and it's available online. So this bottom portion is the Prescott Active Management Area. We're sitting right about here. Should I move this to the top here? This is Highway 89 going up towards Paulden. This contract is generally going to be focusing in this area right here, and there's a few spots up in this area as well, but generally, the focus is here. Can I switch to Elmo? Okay, with the previous map, I was generally pointing to this area and here. It's even tricky for me. Oh, here we go, sorry. This is the highway. I need to orient myself as well. This is the highway, Big Chino Ranch Road going out this direction, the Paulden Community here. So as you'll see, there's blocks of where these investigations will occur, and they're intended to be near the headwaters, that they're intended to be looking at certain geology and having wells accessible for monitoring purposes to help support the model, as well as monitoring purposes if needed for mitigation. The intent of this contract is to use existing wells to investigate and determine the suitability as long-term monitoring locations. Using and rehabilitating existing wells will be a cost savings to the project. Where existing wells do not meet the criteria for use, design specifications for new wells will be prepared. So at this point, we do have a few, let's try to point them out. This well up here, the Gipe Well, has been in use for quite a long time. I think it may have experienced a collapse, and so that one's going to be looked at a little bit closer. This Fletcher Well here is another alternative well that exists to hopefully reduce costs if we can reuse something that already is there. The headwater wells are right in here, but you'll still see that we have investigations to do here and here. You'll see polygons or rectangles, whatever shape you want to call them, up there, as well as some a little bit further up the basin. So these sites are not new, they've been contemplated for quite some time, actually. There was a data collection and monitoring program that was set up in about the 2010 time period, maybe even a little bit earlier. I could be wrong, it could be 2008. And it was looked at not only by city staff at the time, but USGS, United States Geological Survey, Arizona Department of Water Resources, Salt River Project with their consultants, and of course, the consultants for the city. So last, this project or this contract that we're seeking tonight is for the amount of The funds are available through the Comprehensive Agreement Number One Monitoring Fund, and then that fund is supported by the city, the town of Prescott Valley, and Salt River Project. And the city's actual contribution comes from the Alternative Water Fund within budget. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counselor Blair?
Well, I think it's a wonderful thing that we're doing this, this is part of science, as far as I'm concerned. I guess my question, Leslie, would be, knowing that the city purchased the Dugan Weber Well years ago, are those wells being used for monitoring or any kind of access at all, knowing that we owe them, own them?
I don't believe that the Weber Well is actually being looked at, but the Dugan Well is a high priority, and it was recognized again at recent multi-agency meetings. So that is within the contract. To look at that, it's a, has three pismeters in it, cased at different levels, and if possible, we'd like to run an aquifer test on it and see what, what additional information we learn from that well.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and that gets the reason I bring that up. I know at the time, they were purchased, they were high-production wells, and the city was very, I guess, driven at that point to make those wells work back in the day of Sam Steyer. We still own them, so I would think we need to investigate those probably before we drill any new wells.
Yes, at this point, no stone will go unturned, because if we can find cost savings in what exists out there, then we do it, and otherwise, we'll prepare for drilling appropriate monitor wells of the appropriate size.
Counselor Will Menore?
Leslie, my question is, in the scope of work, it talks about the land ownership and access and permitting. So then we will receive, we will get permits from some of these lands, I'm assuming, some are public, some are private?
Yes, some of these are.
And what's the process?
The city has used a standard form in the past. We use it when we were looking at putting the ephemeral stream gauges out here, so we do have some recent stock forms, basically, that outline for the property owner what the intent of being on their property is, who their contact, if there's a question, the term of being able to look at this well, things of that nature. So it's just basically an agreement so that all, both parties know that, one, we can be on their private property, and the private property owner also is in agreement that we can be on the property.
And is some of this part of the initial of the pipeline down the road, as far as contacting, or, and we've discussed that a little bit as far as contacting?
At this point, I don't think there'll be any discussions about further right-of-way or anything of that nature. It could roll in, I guess it could roll into that. If one of these wells is suitable, it can be rehabilitated as needed, it can have a equipment put in it, basically a water level sensor that you house inside the well to keep an eye on changes over the seasons. Maybe if that well owner is interested, they may say, sure, I'll just sell it to you, you know?
Just curious.
But otherwise, it might be a long-term lease or something like that. So, and there's been plenty of those, too. The city allows the same thing for the state, to, we fill out a piece of paperwork to understand who's going to be on the property and how long, and then if there's a need to change that agreement, the opportunities within that agreement as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments for the council? Any public comment? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2016-296.
Second. Have a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Next item.
Item 3J, Adoption of Resolution Number 4334-1543, authorizing application for a Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona, WIFA.
Thank you, Dana. Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is requesting approval from the council to apply to WIFA for a clean water loan, which is related to our wastewater system. It's for three projects, the Sundog Force Main, the Sundog Trunk Main, and the Airport Trunk Main improvements. The total amount of the loan we'll be requesting is $21,600,000. If council approves our application for this loan, we'll get all the paperwork and every. everything together, and the WIFA board will consider it at their August meeting, I believe, August 17th. If that is approved at that point, we will find out the terms, the subsidy that the city would receive on the interest payment, and whether that is the financing option direction that the city would want to go. The council would have to take other actions to actually accept that loan and encumber the city. So depending on how the process goes, we will be back either to accept that loan or to look at other financing options, which could include municipal property corporation bonds or other commitments of the city. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Councilwoman Blair?
Mark, or, Mark or Henry, I suppose based upon that number, this is our course that the council set forward to centralize sewer operations out at the airport, is that correct?
Yes, these three projects are all related to the centralization.
Would that be the total cost of the centralization, or is there more to follow?
No, I do not believe so. This is just the first significant portion. There are other projects down the road.
Do we have an overall cost on this project yet, Henry? And if there's more costs coming, are we going back to WIFA for the remainder of the cost, or how are we going to do that?
Yes, sir. When we were before you, about a year or so ago, and your direction was to go toward centralization, the cost we used was about $42 million. So this goes towards the $40 million. If you recall, this is in comparison to about $60 million if we do a different direction, basically fixing Sundog Plant.
Right. Do we have, do we have an idea if the overall cost to outfit the whole project is $42 million, when we're going to come back, or where we're going to find the other $21 million?
And I could use Mr. Woodfieldson, but we, we, your board approved the new impact fees about a year plus ago. We need to review that every three years, so we're going to consider all the fees, the new impact fees and rates towards this project, and if there are any shortages soon, we will be coming back to you with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, definitely, the, every time these projects come forward, there is going to need to be financing, and we will review the available options at the time. WIFA is continually changing their process, so it's not guaranteed that in the future, a WIFA loan would be the most cost-effective approach for the city, but we will review all the options.
That $21 million, what is the payoff on that? How many, how many years are we looking at?
Generally, WIFA loans are for 20 years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any public comment? Do we have a motion?
Mayor, move to approve resolution number 4334-1543.
Second. Do you have a motion, a second vote, please?
Passes unanimously.
Next item.
Item 3K, adoption of resolution number 4336-1545, revising the city budget policy.
Thank you, Dana. Mayor and Council, this item is as titled, to revise our city budget policy. Original budget policy was adopted in 2002. As we were going through it, there were several just housekeeping things, several of the items that are in charter and state law, we took out of the policy, no reason to restate them. We also looked at the cost recovery of internal service functions and identified some changes that needed to happen there, which included some clarification in language and a different basis or methodology for information technology based on what information technology does today. The item identified back in 2002 was no longer a good approach, a good methodology to do that cost recovery. So those are the significant changes in the policy. We cut about three pages out of it overall and made it much more concise.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Yeah, I'd like to see a little more flexibility in the, in the policy that says fund balances should be used only for one-time expenditures such as capital equipment and improvements. What if we wanted to prepay a debt? Why wouldn't we want to use a fund balance to do that?
That's an excellent point, Councilwoman. You definitely would want to use a fund balance or could use a fund balance for that. This policy doesn't really restrict it, it just gives general guidance around fund balance. That type of thing is, you know, is very limited when you can do it. You know, municipal debts are not like personal mortgages that can be repaid at any time. There's very limited times at which you can do them. There's penalties, sometimes, sometimes not, how you structure that. So the policy itself will not restrict the council from doing that, it just gives general guidelines about what the fund balance balances should be and generally what they should be used for.
Well, for example, if we wanted to make an advance payment on the PSPRS debt, would you consider that a one-time expenditure in a fiscal year?
You, council, of course, could direct fund balance to go to that. It's definitely something that would need to be discussed and evaluated before that would happen, but, you know, that would be a payoff of a loan, a one-time type thing, not a continued operating cost, which is what the policy is intended to make clear, that fund balances should not be used to increase service levels that have an ongoing annual cost.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt resolution number 4337-1546.
Second.
Is that?
1545.
That wasn't the 1545, excuse me.
No, yes. Okay, you got a rate? Okay, we got a motion, second? Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Next item.
Item 3O, adoption of resolution number 4337-1546, committing $3,800,000 of fund balance in the Streets Special Revenue Fund for acquisition of open space.
Thank you, Dana. As we discussed at the budget workshops and at the mid-year budget report, all through the budget process essentially, with the change in the purpose of the dedicated 1% Streets and Open Space Fund to Streets Only, and the fact that multiple things go into the Streets Fund, it would be appropriate for council to make a distinction on the fund balances currently there from accumulation to be used for the specific use of open space if it is the desire of council. And council concurred during the workshops with that, gave consensus to that, so we bring forward this resolution to set aside the $3.8 million which was discussed at those workshops. Again, this is a commitment of fund balance, it's a commitment of the, of the special tax that was identified by voters, but the commitment could be changed by future councils or this council in the future. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Councilwoman Blair?
Well, after the budget meeting, I did some long, hard thinking about it, and I'm curious, city manager or somebody that can answer the question, to me, that $3.8 million is an arbitrary figure. Where did it come from and how was it generated? Being somebody that sat here for a lot of years, and same folks sitting here right now over the past three years, we had committed in each one of those budget cycles $500,000 for open space if in fact, something came up that was worthy of purchase. So the way I look at it, over the past three years, there would be about $1.5 million that I would feel more comfortable with putting in a secured fund for open space and not an arbitrary number like $3,800. So before I put my green light on $3.8 million, I want to know where it came from.
Councilman Mayor and Council, it came out of discussion among the council members, with and among the council members, and effectively, it would bring up the total open space acquisition amount from that 1% Streets and Open Space to $20 million, approximately $20 million. And you're absolutely right, it is, it is somewhat arbitrary, but it can also be looked at as a fairly significant allocation to resolving this, to the extent that, as has been indicated, it's a resolution. This council and other council in the future could certainly modify it and do whatever they wanted. But I think from an accounting standpoint, what it does is it clarifies a specific amount so that at some time in the longer-term future, there is not an argument or disagreement about how much of that fund balance that was in the Streets and Open Space Fund as it existed on December 31st of 2015 is still available. And then we start having to have a discussion about, well, on that date, it was X, but in the last five years, we've spent all this money on Streets Project, and so it's, it becomes, the farther we go into the future, the more uncertain and obscure it becomes, which is something that presumably, we would want to avoid.
And as I, did you have some?
Which I totally understand, but I guess, is this amount of money still earmarked based upon the original resolution for purchases only for open space?
Well, that was the restricted purpose of the 1% Streets and Open Space. It could only be used for acquisition, it could not be used for maintenance. And so that restriction would carry through to this special commitment.
And there again, is another part of my heartburn. We keep buying more open space, we have no way to put money towards the maintenance of it, and I find it really difficult to put $3.8 million in a secured account without having some relief towards the maintenance of purchasing this open space.
I think a doctor would say that's a general heartburn, perhaps not a specific heartburn.
Okay. Needless to say, it's still a pain, how's that? And I go back to being the only one, by the way, that sat here, understanding why the initiative went to the public in the first place and was voted on when Sam Steyer was the mayor, and understanding the purpose of why it was tied to roads, because at the time, they thought that was the only way it would pass, and understanding that it's been challenged twice in the court of law, that gave each individual sitting council, every time it changed, every two years, the right to spend money for open space, but did not dictate how much money it had to spend. So understanding that it's been through court, understanding the folks out there that said, well, we voted for this open space measure because we believe we were going to spend $42.5 million, I don't think they totally understood the resolution because it was very clear.
Well, I'd like to remind the council, too, when we had discussions on the 3.8, we talked to Parks and Rec, Joe, you might want to step on up there. We asked you what it was going to take to complete the trail system as you had intended, and you told me that you needed right around $3 million. We already had $700,000 in the account, and so with the three and the seven, we just rounded up another $100,000 to a full $20 million. So I think that's what we're looking at, is basically not going out and just buying open space to buy open space. We're looking at trying to complete the trail system, interconnection between trails, and particularly the circle trail. All of these trails are, you know, revenue producers for us, they're a draw for tourists to come in here, and we all felt that by putting this money aside and finishing off the trail system, that that was going to be a benefit revenue-wise to the general fund and also Parks and Rec going into the future. Am I correct?
Yes, Mayor. Largely, it's about economic development. A number is very difficult to put on it, 3.8 million or whatever it might be, but as opportunities come up that are strategic, that allow us to produce outdoor recreational amenities that will bring people from the valley and bring people from all over different states to spend their money in the community, that is really what the purpose of, and again, that's not the only way that we acquire open space. There's donations, there's other procedures that we would go through first, but to have another tool in the toolbox would allow us then to strategically look at opportunities that would help create revenue in the community.
And this is basically just setting the funding aside and earmarking it, but at the same time, any expenditure of that money would have to come back to the council for further approval.
Correct. Any expenditure over $10,000 would have to come back to whatever sitting council at the time for their approval.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. I concur in some degree with Mr. Blair, having been here when this thing began and the reason for it. John, you're the attorney. At any time, is this council forbid from going and buying anything that we would choose to if we can afford it, whether we have a special fund or not? Do we not have the ability to approach the general fund if the money's available to buy open space?
You need to use your microphone, Jim.
Or anything else?
So long, it has to be, it has to be budgeted, in other words, the appropriation or purchases or some, there has to be some sort of budgeting of that during a particular year, but if, if an amount is budgeted to spend on open space acquisition, then, then the council has the ability to acquire.
Thank you for that, and if, if this was specifically for buying trails, why didn't it say buying trails? I don't, I don't read it that way. I read it for something other than, if you're going to restrict it, why isn't it restricted to buying trails? That's not what I read.
The, the, the citizen-approved initiative gave this, gave the council or the city the ability to do one of two things with this 1% tax, Streets and Roads improvements and construction, or the acquisition of open space. What this resolution does is it sets aside the 3.8 million, it still has to be appropriated in this year's budget to spend any of it, all are, you know, either 3.8 or some part of it has to be put in the budget, and then a future acquisition, whether it's land or easements for trails, whether it's a large parcel for open space, we then have to come back to the council for any kind of acquisition.
But it's not, but it's not being presented as restricted use for purchase of trail?
Purchase of open space.
There you go. Thank, thank, thank you. I mean, I understand it, but there's nothing to preclude us at any time with or without this 3.8 million from buying property if we were to choose to buy the property for a trail, or for parks, or whatever the case. Right, all right, thank you.
Councilwoman Orr?
As I stated in the second budget meeting, I think this is an excellent idea for us to set this, this money aside and designate it for open space. My notes, the economic development, over 40% of the people that visit here come here to be, to get on our trails, to do our outdoor recreation. I believe, if I'm going to go buy a car, I kind of need to know how much money I have in my savings account, so I know maybe what kind of car I'm going to buy. Is it going to be a Volkswagen, is it going to be a Mercedes, probably a used Volkswagen. However, I think it's important for Parks and Recreation for them to be able, and we've had this conversation with Joe and with Chris, for them to be able to look and see what's out there, what do we need? All right, we want to finish that circle trail, what do we need to do? They need to know about how much money that we're talking about, and Joe, I appreciated your coming forward with, about $3 million is going to do a very good job for us, and like Mayor said, we already had the 750, and so it wasn't really arbitrary. I guess it's arbitrary in some ways, but, but it was based on some logical conclusion. The money is there, we're just setting it aside, because once this money is gone, this is the final of that 1% of open, and open space and roads. So I'm in agreement with this, I think it's a good thing to do for our city. I believe, you know, we are a place where we depend on people coming to be in our, in our outdoor space, coming to visit our neighborhoods and, and being on our trails. I really don't see any downside to this at all for the city. So I'm, I'm all for this, I think it's a good thing to do.
Councilwoman Chiskin?
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, this is strategic for the city, isn't it?
As I mentioned, I think at the last council meeting, when we talked about open space, we build trail systems within, I guess the best example is the James property that was purchased, the Constellation Trail System has been built in that 80 acres. And that trail system then connects to other trails that, the Willadell's as an example, it can connect to the Willadell's Trail System. So linking these trail systems in strategically creates those recreational opportunities that put us, I guess, help us get a better market share. I look at this as a business transaction in the sense that we're I look at this as a business transaction in the sense that we're looking for a larger market share of the visitation for outdoor recreation and ecotourism. I think we're doing a good job. I think we've seen that the transient occupancy tax in the last five years is up 42%. I think part of that increase is due to us creating the infrastructure that brings the visitors here. So, yes, it's strategic.
So we need to create access, and we also need to create a win-win. We've established that it's a win for the city, because it is an economic benefit to the city, a great return on investment. On the other side of it are the open space folks who have basically lost, they lost the last election, but they're still there. And I've been a Rotarian for 36 years, and some of the tenants of Rotary are, is it fair to well-concerned? Well, it's been fair to the people who don't want open space, but I'm not sure, I'm not quite so sure if it's been fair to those who want it. Will it build goodwill and better friendships? I think that we need to work with those folks to make a better Prescott in the future, and I think that they'd be much more willing to work with us if, in fact, we put this money away. And will it be beneficial to well-concerned? I think it needs to be a win-win. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Luzzell.
Thank you, Mayor. My views in the past have been quite clear on the purchase of open space. It damages our school systems and affordable housing. But in this case, because we have capable department heads such as Joe, I just have a problem with putting a price tag on it and just saying X. But I will, you know, we have good staff, like such as Joe Baines, and I trust him spending that money wisely. And unless it's some, something I haven't foreseen, you know, I'm only going to be, my vote is only going to be for trails. And I agree with Councilman Lamerson that it's too bad it just can't say trails, but in the future, you know, my vote's only going to go to trails that Joe recommends.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Thank you, Mayor. Open space means a lot of different things to different people, and we look to our general plan for that basic definition. Trails are the means by which people can be allowed into those open spaces to enjoy them. And they come here to get into those areas. And as we look north, we're to all the land that we're going to be annexing, and we will be developed as commercial property and residential property. What we're going to end up with is a very unique area within the center of Prescott. It's almost like the Central Park of Prescott. We today have the opportunity to exercise foresight for future generations, to set aside those rocky areas that would be, could be developed, difficult, but could be developed, and provide the access for everyone, future generations, to enjoy them. And, you know, they'll be enjoying not just the rocks, but all the creatures that live there, and the water. Also, open space does protect our watershed. The more we can keep out septic systems, the better protection we can provide for our watershed, which all drains down Granite Creek, and we think ultimately to the upper verti, but that's an important consideration for Prescott as well. And as the city manager said, for accounting purposes, this clarifies, this resolution clarifies that there is a discrete pot of money, which then Parks and Recreation can look toward, as you noted, Councilwoman Luzzell, and begin working on filling in those very strategic places. And we did have an executive session. We talked about what was strategic, and I know all the council was listening and understands that. So it's not just throwing a bunch of money at open space. There's a real plan, and I think it will accomplish some very good things for Prescott.
Any other comments from the council? Anything from the public? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you for putting this ordinance on the agenda, Mayor and council. My name is Rod Moyer, and I'm a Prescott citizen. I want to make one final appeal for passage of this ordinance, addressing a couple of concerns I've heard here tonight. The voter intent, Councilman Blair, you mentioned that there was a lawsuit, and it was basically shot down by a judge, as to what percentage of the Streets and Open Space Fund was to be spent on open space. The judge, in fact, said that he had to rule against the plaintiff in that case, because the language that actually made it on the ballot did not specify that percentage. But that same judge found that in examining all the campaign materials from the year 2000, said the voter intent, to his way of thinking, was pretty clear, and that they wanted a lot more than what they got. The maintenance versus acquisition subject, some of yous have expressed concern about continuing to acquire land with no money to pay for maintenance of it. But our Parks and Recreation Director, Joe Baines, in a future, pardon me, in a past council meeting, testified that unimproved open land, just open land with maybe a primitive trail on it, costs almost nothing to maintain, because all the city does with that land is do brush removal, fire-wise treatment. He covers that pretty much with grants. The issue about trails versus open space, we can't have trails without some open space parcels. If we go into a future just thinking that we can build trails with easements, and just easements for the trails, eventually, on both sides of that trail will be built. And who do you think is going to come to Prescott to hike a trail through a subdivision? It's not going to happen. Even Prescott residents won't do that unless they live in that particular subdivision. So, in closing, I want to show you, this is one parcel, Granite Gardens, that was purchased with open space funds. 3.8 million in 2008, I believe. That's a full 1/4 of the total that's been spent so far on open space by the city out of that fund. And we've raised $180,000, not the $75,000 that was originally foreseen. This is a premier property called the Storm Ranch. And you can't see it, but there's a little city street sign here that says, Granite Gardens, this way. That's the previous photo I showed you. And Storm Ranch, this way. And this is a connecting property between the Granite Gardens to the south and other parcels that we have to the north. And that's what we're talking about here, is getting connecting parcels that we can build trails on, but which have a value outside of just a 50-foot-wide trail easement. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Hi, Mayor, council. Barbara Jacobson, Prescott, Arizona. My hearing's not as good as it used to be, but I was at both budget meetings myself, and I heard a few different things. And yes, I did hear Joe's good presentation on maintenance as well, that maintenance isn't a problem with open space. It is taken care of, as Rod said. My concern is, and I don't know what gets talked about after budget meetings, but I did hear Joe that day also talk about 2 to 10 million. I don't know where 3 million came from, but he spoke in that meeting about 2 to 10 million, and that was also for easements, as well as parcels for allure, and as he talks about today, economic development. I encourage you, as Jean had mentioned, too, to support this and to read the old open space plan, 2008, 2009, somewhere around there, and the general plan, and the definition of open space is in there. It's all written down. There's no question. It's not about rodeo grounds. It's not about, you know, it can be about some easements, but it can also be for parcels, as has been said, so I won't repeat it. This money creates tenfold or more. I'm not an economic developer, you know? It creates tenfold or more money back to you. You don't have to charge a campground fee. You don't have to charge a parking fee. People come in and spend money, and you get to collect all that sales tax for us, to provide services for us. And I think that's, to me, what the city does. My understanding, this is written, I'm a little concerned that it can be changed. That was not my understanding, that things could just be changed. But I don't make the laws and the rules here. This was written as in the Streets Special Revenue Fund. The word "open space" was left out of this resolution. To me, it's Streets and Open Space Special Revenue Fund. I think that was the title of it, that ended in December, the end of December 2015. I could be wrong. And my understanding from the budget meeting as well was that there was 44,000, 44 million, I'm sorry, left in that fund at the end of December. I could have misunderstood. Anybody who's good with figures can correct me, but I was watching it creep up over the months, and that's what it looked like, but I could have misunderstood. That's a tremendous amount that was left, and I think this 3.8 million, as has been mentioned by a few council people, is definitely fair and will be used appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Winus?
Hello, Mayor, City Council. I guess I feel so passionate...
State your name for the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. I'm J.D. Greenberg from Prescott, and I've talked to several of you on the council, and I feel so passionately about this that I'm shaking, and I apologize for that. I think of some of the... I can't remember the tribe back east, and one of the things that the chief of that tribe had talked about is that we can't just plan next year or five years, that we have to initiate planning, that we can look at 50 years down the road, 100 years down the road, long after all of us are gone. And we need to be proud of the decisions that we make now for those who will come after us. And I think voting in favor of setting aside at least this 3.8 million for those who will come after us is really, really important. It's really important, too, I know that some of the money has gone for trail easements. Trail easements are time-limited, and from what I understand, the property owner can make some adjustments to those easements. So that's why I think that the fact that we need to actually purchase some of this land, and what Rod said about the Storm Ranch, is a key example. I have long since given up on us acquiring Badger Mountain and the Prescott side of Glassford Hill, because I have been told by people who know that those properties are not as much in danger. They aren't, they do not have water, and they do not lend themselves to ready development. But some of the other properties that would be connecting, the wonderful trails that have been established, are in danger. I know that earlier today, you looked at the Walden Development, there's the Fan Development, there's Jason Geezy's Development. All of those are in areas that are easily developed, and so if we want to have trails and open space activities in that type of terrain, we have to make sure that we purchase it. I would also say that we have to think about the wildlife that we have around Prescott, and even expanding to thinking in terms of Yavapai County. We have to make sure that we leave wildlife habitat corridors, or else we're not going to wind up with anything else but the little ground squirrels that make my garden a nightmare. One of the dollars and cents things that has happened very recently to show that there can be a benefit to maintaining open space in the city is Acker Park. I know that citizens, what was it, 20 years ago, went to bat when the city was thinking about selling that property, and it was decided that it would be kept as open space as its park. And just this week, the Friends of Acker Park nonprofit organization is in the process of being dissolved. And the funds that have been raised over the years for Acker Park are being put into the Arizona Foundation, that will be spent by our Recreation Department. And it amounts to close to $50,000 that will be in an endowment, which will generate at least $200,000 to $2,500 a year for maintenance improvements, whatever the city needs on Acker Park. We can utilize our volunteers for maintenance. We can do fundraising, just ice-stuff the little holiday cards every year that were sold for Acker Park fundraising. We can do things. We can work together. I think that what has happened over the last few years is that there has been a real schism with open space people and economic development people. I think we need to get together and stop land-blasting each other and work together. We can figure out wonderful ways to raise money using our open space lands for the betterment of all of Prescott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take one more comment, if there are any.
My name is Daniel Mattson. I live over on Merritt Street. My understanding of this is that 3.8 million would be roughly what was left in the fund at the time we switched over to the new Streets Only Fund. And so this is kind of throwing a bone to all the open space people and saying, "We'll take what was left from that fund and put it toward open spaces." I think it's a no-brainer. I have no doubt that we can use 3.8 million productively, and in the long run, it's going to pay off a lot. I really, I don't really see that there's any need to debate this any longer. I would suggest that you simply approve it.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 4337-1546.
Second. Motion, second vote, please.
Passes 6 to 1. Mayor Protan Lamerson, dissenting.
Next item.
Item 3M, Discussion and Possible Approval of Changes to the Council Meeting Schedule. Mayor and Council, the Prescott City Charter requires the City Council to meet at least two times each month. Currently, the council holds two regularly scheduled study session meetings and two voting meetings each month. The meetings are held on the first and third Tuesday of each month, with the study session at 1:00 p.m. and the voting session at 5:30. Other special meetings are scheduled on an ad-needed basis. The item is being presented for your discussion and possible approval of changes to the schedule.
I guess I start this thing off. You're not up there to talk about this, are you, Mark?
No, sir.
Okay. I thought maybe you had some special guidance.
You like my opinion.
Anyway, as I recall, shortly after I became mayor, I had a couple of folks on the council come up, and I've even had people from the public said that they like to have meetings later in the day on Tuesdays, so that they'd have an opportunity to come in. Some of those people that said that at the time, particularly in the public, I think I saw them one or two meetings, I haven't seen them since. We seem to have a very dedicated bunch that comes in, no matter what time it is, and wants to hear what's going on and be a part of the process, and I'm very appreciative of that. So I guess right now, what I'm going to be asking the council is to give us their comments or recommendations on what you would like to see us do in moving this. We originally said we would hold it for six months, but, you know, I'm getting enough comments from both the public and the council here to relook at this, so we'll relook at it now, and if we do make a change today, it'll probably take effect sometime in July. Councilwoman Chisca.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that we ought to return to the 1 o'clock, 3:30 meeting schedule.
3 o'clock.
2 o'clock?
Yeah, I think that it's, I think that 3 o'clock, I think that, or the 1 o'clock, 3 o'clock meeting schedule, 1 o'clock for the... I think that—or the 1:00, 3:00 meeting schedule, 1:00 for the study session, 3:00 for the voting meeting.
Okay, and so you're looking at one study session a month and two voting meetings?
I was actually looking at two study sessions a month and two voting meetings.
Just getting clarification. Councilman Blair.
As you well know, Mayor, I'm the one that probably pushed this issue and as I sit here tonight and see staff half asleep as well as myself, it probably was not a good idea. However, based upon the public clamoring about there would be more attendance at our council meetings if it was at night, has not come to fruition and I would absolutely make the motion, as well as Steve and probably most of us sitting here, to move back to a study at 1:00 and a voting at 3:00 twice a month.
Councilman Lozelle.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, we don't want to go back to what we had because we had four 3:00s. And I do like the study voting twice a month. So I agree with Steve, 1:00 and 3:00. And if something—if we got to do an exact, maybe it's at noon or something like that.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
I think we need to have at least one meeting a month at 5:30. I've observed that attendance really is pretty good at 5:30 meetings, but it boils down to being a function of what's on the agenda more than anything else. And I just feel it's our obligation to be available to the public and that includes working people and school kids who might want to come to a council meeting. I personally do find it exhausting to have a whole day going from 1:00 p.m. to sometimes 8:00. Looks like it's going to be longer tonight. And it's hard, but I'm willing to do it if we can at least do it one meeting a month for the public.
Councilwoman Wilcox? I'm in correction order.
Well, the one thing that I do like, and I think Jean's got a good point there about the one, once a month, maybe with 5:30, but I do like having—the staff having the week off so we don't have consecutive meetings because I think that that gives them time to—they—a lot of work goes into these packets and just getting these agendas put together. So I definitely would not want to return to where we were, which was we were meeting 3:00 because they didn't have that week off. Alternative 2, I don't know, the alternative 2 could also have, once a month, we could do a 5:30, but then I think people get confused sometime because they don't know which time is 5:30. So I'm certainly willing to, but I believe—I believe this—most of this attendance is issue-driven.
It is.
And so I guess if I were to vote for one, it would be alternative 2.
Councilman Shizka?
Yeah, I just think that issues equal attendance and no matter when it is, if it's a gore in your ox, you're going to attend.
It's true.
Okay, any other further comments from the council?
Yeah. I think we ought to meet at 9:00 at night, just to be obnoxious, you know?
Be here by yourself?
Yeah, get out of here about—well, then I'd always get my way. You got—you got the point here, A.T. You didn't get to be general for nothing. I prefer—
Alternative 2.
Wait, 3:00, 5:00. Or 1:00, 3:00.
So option 2?
Right.
Okay. Any public comment?
Daniel Mattson again. I don't know if you guys have noticed, but my attendance has gone down since you switched to the 1:00, 5:30.
I wonder where you've been, Daniel.
I've been busy, as I usually am. And stopping at 1:00 and then again at 5:30, it just breaks the day up too much. When I have somebody I have to transport to Phoenix, I can't do both. And this time of the evening, I usually like to be sitting in my, you know, in my living room with my wife, enjoying the evening, not sitting here.
Oh, come on.
Oh, yeah. So, you know, 1 and 3 works okay for me because otherwise it's like a split shift, you know? And we're blowing most of our time, you know? We don't know how much time we're going to get in between. Well, if it's 1 and 3, we're not going to waste much. I would point out, though, it used to be we did three meetings a week—or three meetings a month, first, second, and fourth. We always knew we had the third off. It was always a 3:00 meeting and that split it out over the month and gave us an opportunity if we found something at the second meeting, first or second meeting that we wanted looked at. They had until the third to do it. Two meetings a month, you know, two meeting days a month, I do think we get it pretty heavily loaded and I've noticed we've had these horrendously long days. I'd much rather have the 1 and 3, but I would not be opposed to considering going back to first, second, and third—or first, second, and fourth Tuesdays again and spreading the load out over the month a little bit more because these long meetings are a little harder to deal with. And I think if you look, most of the people that are—have been the diehard attendees for years, we still have us all here and I think it's a hardship on us. Now, those of us who want to spend the time and effort to watch the city's business and do what we can to give our honest input and all that, I think this is overburdening us a little bit. It's kind of hard to deal with. So get rid of the 5:30 meeting, please.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Any other comments?
Barbara Jacobson, Prescott. I'm speaking for the working person who may not work in the evening and may not even have 1:00 free. I mean, you could go to 10:00 in the morning. I know it's hard to cover everybody, but the option might be 3:00 and 5:00 because I know the split shift can be difficult, too. It's difficult for me, but you could do 3:00 and 5:00 or you could do that once a month, you know, the second time. And I know you got to stay up a little later. It might be good if some people get a little sleepy when they vote. I don't know. But I'm kind of going for that. So anyway, I just—I think you have had more attendance from my attendance, afternoons or evenings. I think you have had more attendance and, yeah, it is often based upon the issue, but I think it's important to give some options for people and for people to be able to come if they have to work all day. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll take one more comment.
Ralph Hess again. Yeah, if anyone in the city doesn't have anything they want to necessarily say, going back to one of the comments, doesn't have anything to say, you can watch these meetings on TV. So—and you can watch them in real time on TV. So I think the key, from my perspective, and I think maybe some others, is to be able to have the meetings at a time when if someone who wants to make a comment or wants to present something to you during the meeting, that it's set at a time where they'd be able to do that. Now, for me, it doesn't matter because I can come anytime, but there are a lot of people in town who I don't think will be able to come and make a comment that they want to make unless it's after work. So—and the other comment—the only other comment I want to make is, I really encourage you to invite comments even at the study sessions because unless you have the opportunity to hear from us, you're—at a study session, the only time you're going to hear from us is five minutes before you make a vote, in which you've already made up your mind, most likely. So the key is, I think, to the timing of these meetings, is to make it available for people who want to come down and make a comment. Thanks.
Thank you. I will say one thing about the study sessions and that, basically to inform the council on issues that are facing the city. We, of course, love to have the public come and listen in and become informed, too. And there are times when I feel that there's questions or issues that, you know, we need to get public input at, even at a study session. But, you know, we'll see how it goes. I'm not going to promise anything on, you know, going to full public input during a study session, but I understand, I'll keep it in mind. City manager, if we make a decision on this tonight, could we start this—the new schedule sometime in July?
I think so. City clerk, do you agree with that?
Yes, I think that's possible.
And I'd like to make a motion.
And if I could just add, excuse me, councilman, if it's alternative 2, if that's what the council's inclined to consider and perhaps approve, then the Council Water Issues Committee, which is a separate committee, would be July 5th. The second Tuesday would be July 12th and the fourth Tuesday would be July 26th. So for the purpose of this meeting, which is a city council meeting, if you change the schedule, alternative 2, it would be effective July 12th.
Okay. Well, before the motion, I just want to say that this is going to clear up my hunting situation for help, so go ahead and make your motion.
I would just have to say, in sitting here at the last 5:30 meetings, and I do believe it's all issue-driven, right now, tonight, if staff went away—thanks for being here, by the way. I know you're missing your dinner. And the regulars went away, we would have a handful of people that wouldn't normally be here, so I would move to support changing the meetings back to alternative 2.
Second.
You have a motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Next item.
Item 3M, Acceptance of City Manager Resignation and Direction on Filling the Position Permanently as Well as Management Leadership Course in the Interim.
Okay, we have a—we have the city manager's resignation and we need to take a look at accepting that tonight and also look at how we want to continue in the future until we have a replacement. I think most people know that we've already gone out with an announcement. I think that was on 27th, I believe, wasn't it? Does anybody know?
I think so.
I think it was on the 27th. It'll close on the 27th of June. Gives us about 30 days. It's gone nationwide. We're going to be looking—hopefully, we'll get quite a few candidates come in and take a look at Prescott. We—it's going to be probably a pretty lengthy process in reviewing them, then actually deciding on who we're going to pull in for initial interviews and then final interviews. So it's going to take us a while. We're figuring, you know, four to six months. I hope it can be four months, but, you know, I know—I think the last time we had a major announcement for city manager, I think it took us almost six months before they finally selected somebody. So at this point, I'll open it up to discussion from the council. Councilman Lozelle.
I didn't think I was going to be that quick. First off, I would like to thank Craig personally for his—for what he's done for the city and his time he's put in. Having said that, I appreciate the fact that the professional manner in which he put forth his resignation. And I know there's been discussion that possibly to keep him on. I would—I've been through organizations where we have had top executives leave the organization and our department heads step up in the time of need. And I think we have a great group of department heads. And I would feel best for the city and for Craig and everyone involved. They'll be honored his resignation for the time limit and put an interim city manager in and depend on our department heads to run the city until we find the proper city manager.
Councilman Blair?
I've done a lot of thinking about this. I suppose as the longest sitting city councilman here, and I've been through six city managers here in the city of Prescott. And all of them have been there for different reasons and all of them have left for a different reason. And frankly, from my opinion, some would say, based upon what we did when we hired Mr. McConnell as the city manager, it may have been right or it may have been wrong, but at the time, in my opinion, it was right. And I'm not going to second-guess that. Also, at the time, he was project manager before he was city manager and entered into a contract with the council to perform those duties and stated that if ever he was to move backwards, based upon whether he removed himself or the council removed him, he would go back to that project manager. And I started thinking about it today and I had that information of what a project manager would do as Mr. McConnell stepping down into that position. And I started thinking about, you know, whether you should just cut and let somebody go or whether you keep him on. And from my standpoint, after a lot of long, hard thought, I started thinking about institutional knowledge and whether people would believe in institutional knowledge or not. I was voted out of council once and then re-elected. So I think some of that has to do with institutional knowledge and born and raised here. So from my standpoint, I originally thought, from the corporate world, you just let Mr. McConnell take his way and we buy him out of his contract and then we get an interim city manager. But from my standpoint now, the way I kind of look at it is, is that I agree that he steps down, but move into the position of what I saw in the paper today, and it was the first time I saw it, where it starts talking about water production and rodeo grounds. We have a rodeo facility we bought several years ago and absolutely nothing's been done. There's a lot of things, I think, that we can use his expertise for and what he was originally hired to do when Mr. Norwood put him in that position. And I would leave it up to the new city manager then to make the decision of whether that position is a viable position when he comes aboard. I think that's what a city manager needs to do. And that's a tough, tough decision for me to make because I could have gone either way, but thank you for what you've done.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Well, I agree mostly with Councilman Lozelle that we should accept the city manager's resignation and put in place an interim city manager. There are many retired city managers nationwide and in the state of Arizona who could be very helpful in making the transition. It's not that they don't know anything. If they're experienced city manager, they know generally how the system works, how the budget works, how the work needs to keep flowing. We do have a lot of very good department heads and I have confidence that they would all step up and work with the interim—a different interim city manager to keep the city going. So I would be in favor of hiring an interim city manager until we can get a full-time city manager in place.
Councilman Shizka?
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate everybody's comments. I would not approve of a caretaker city manager. I think we're wasting our money. I think that, you know, if Craig would have resigned six months from now, then we'd still have him for the next six months, unless there was a vote of no confidence on the council. But the truth of the matter is, is that I think we're fooling ourselves if we think that investing in a caretaker city manager is going to do anything other than pay a guy to sit in a chair and, you know, wait until the next city manager comes in. So that's my feeling about it.
Councilwoman Orr?
It was interesting that the day that I first heard about any of this situation, the morning, early that morning, well, not that early, but probably around 8:30, I had gone into Craig's office and expressed my appreciation for how much he had helped me as a new city councilwoman, learned what I have learned and how he's prepared so that when we come to these meetings, we have the information that we need. And it was sincere and I just said, "I really appreciate this and I appreciate all that you've done." And then I heard the news. I was—I was—I was actually very disappointed, but I understand, you know, Craig has actually been doing two jobs. His job plus the job he was doing as project manager. I agree with Councilman Blair and Councilman Shizka. We have critical issues before us right now and I believe that under Mayor Oberg's leadership, we are—we are moving. I believe we have wonderful things going, lots of plans. The city is moving ahead and the last thing we need to do right now is put on the brakes. I think we need to keep the city with—and we're going to do strategic planning. We have good things happening. I definitely do not want to—well, I mean, it's all of us and I appreciate everyone's opinion, but I would hate to see us go with an interim because I believe the institutional knowledge that we have from Craig can help us stay focused and as we look for a new city manager. And then I agree with what Steve is saying, you know, let's let that manager then make some determination at that time.
Well, I'll go ahead and weigh in now. Basically, I want to think— Well, I'll go ahead and weigh in now. Basically, I want to thank Craig McConnell for the great job he's done. I think he's done a superlative job for the Prescott government. He's kept our oars in the water, kept us moving. Maybe some people weren't totally agreeing on where the boat was going all the time, but I think for the most part, he did a commendable job. And I am going to go ahead and accept his resignation. He's indicated to me that he feels there's a need for a new set of eyes. He's been at this for five years, and he feels that it's time for somebody else to come in and try and look at the issues from a different perspective. Personally, I feel that it's very important, as Councilman Blair and Shiski and Councilwoman Ohr have indicated, that bringing on a caretaker manager with the complex problems that we have facing this city would not be a good idea. You know, there's other city managers, but they don't understand water like we have water issues here in Prescott. They might understand the PSPRS debt, some of the other financial issues that we have, but I don't think that they really understand our water issues, and that's where Craig McConnell has a particular strong suit, and that's where he came from, when he came up to be the city manager, he's continued to do that work. He supported Leslie Grazer tremendously in her efforts in trying to manage the water portfolio for us. And I think what we need to do is make sure that we're thinking about Prescott, and not about any kind of personal opinion. And right now, I think the important thing to do is to accept his resignation, number one. Number two, keep him on as an interim until he's replaced by the new city manager, and then let the new city manager make the determination on his continuing to stay in his former position and for how long. Mayor Protem?
Thank you very much, Mayor. In agreement with most of the council sitting here, Craig, thank you for stepping up to do a job, understanding when I was on the council, and you chose to help the city, you were at that time, public works, in public works, had been brought up by the guy that was leaving to be a deputy city manager, along with another deputy city manager. And you've done an admirable job for somebody who was never trained as a city manager, and I really appreciate what you've done. I agree with Harry, I agree with Blair. There's a reason why we built into your contract an opportunity for you not, because you weren't trained, we didn't hire you as a city manager solely as a city manager, we kept you on as a project manager, public works guy, the guy that had the knowledge on the water, the guy that had the eye on the road issues, the guy that had the eye on the various different things that the community's been going through for the last eight years. Remember, we didn't ask you to leave, you resigned. So, yeah, I'm prepared to accept your resignation. Thank you very much. We didn't choose to dump you. So, but thank you very much, and I realize that we do have a contract in place. I'm not quite sure how that fits a resignation versus we dumped you, but I'm sure that we have an attorney to sort that out.
Mr. Palladini, I guess we probably have two motions here, number one, to accept the resignation, and number two, to decide on whether or not we're going to continue as in with Ms. McConnell as the interim city manager until replaced by the replacement.
I think the third part I'm hearing is the, the project manager position would serve at the pleasure of the new, new city manager.
Okay.
So you can do that in one motion if you want, or you could break it into three, it's really...
Well, I got to talk to my city clerk to make sure she knows how to give us a motion that would...
Or I could give a shot.
Include all three.
I think if you did one motion, it would be to accept the resignation as city manager, to appoint Craig McConnell as interim city manager until a new city manager is on board, and after which, Mr. McConnell would then go into the project, regional, regional project manager?
Regional programs.
Regional programs director position, serving at the pleasure of the new city manager.
Okay, so moved. Do you have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, vote.
Passes five to two. Councilwoman Wilcox and Councilman Lozelle dissenting.
Okay. Last item?
Item three, oh, adoption of resolution number 4335-1544, adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year 2017 and setting the public hearing for the final budget expenditure limitation and tax levies for the city of Prescott.
Thank you, Dana. Lars Johnson, budget and tax manager. So the last, but not least item is our tentative budget adoption. The fiscal year 17 budget process started early this spring. Here's some important milestones presented. For the benefit of the public, documents of these presentations are available on our website. So today, we're at the tentative budget adoption, which is one of the final stages. Adoption of the tentative budget is required by city charter and state law, and once this is adopted, the expenditure limit cannot be increased, but it can be reduced. Today, like Dana said, we're also officially setting the public hearing for our tax levy adoption and our final budget adoption. There is a few follow-up items we'd like to present to you from the workshops that were held in May. Number one is, per the input given by city council, a community outreach manager position has been added to the budget. The position has been added to the city manager's office, which will then be cost recovered from other departments, and the funds with a minimal impact to the general fund. That impact is about 26%. And per request, here are also a list of citywide memberships totaling about 126,000. There's Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition, Greater Prescott Regional Economic Partnership, League of Arizona Cities and Towns, Northern Arizona Council of Governments, Northern Arizona Municipal Water User Association, some sister cities, and the Prescott Chamber of Commerce. And next, the fire chief will come up and discuss about the fire department auxiliary personnel use.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back in March 15th, I believe, we briefed about the fire and EMS services, and at the conclusion of that particular meeting, I was asked to assess and offer some thorough thought to options as to the use of either volunteer reserve, or some means of added supplementing to our basic fire services within our community. In the, our planning meeting within our department in April, we addressed this particular issue, at which time I had Division Chief Dave Essex kind of cost out and look at what it would take to establish a reserve firefighting force capable of providing into frontline services. Back in our May 12th budget meeting, I presented some of those figures, and I believe that you each received some detailed study of that as to what those costs would be, and that is basically, roughly about $230,000 that is currently unappropriated to use some sort of reserve force to staff up or replace staff in a paid-on call or a volunteer-type scenario. That said, we didn't want to close the book on this whole idea by any means, so what we did do is look at some of the options that we might have available that were plausible, could be done with zero increase to our ONM budget, and I think we've really kind of focused down to about four target areas. Those are before you tonight. One is, one of the target areas is to kind of ease some of the non-emergent service call types, and perhaps use auxiliary personnel to fulfill some of those obligations, at least on a, kind of a Monday through Friday, 8:30 till 6:30 in the evening. That would allow some of our fire trucks to remain in service and enhance overall reliability within the community of having a fire truck available by not having to send those out to do battery replacements on smoke detectors, snake removals, and some of those non-emergent calls. Another area is, and this is much underserved right at the moment, as it is in many fire departments, is the need to establish some emergency pre-plans for our facilities within this community. I kind of look at this as the, kind of the Prescott Top 100 mini Forbes list, I guess. We have a lot of commercial development that is a very credible economic driver for our community. However, when our firefighters respond to those facilities, a lot of times, we don't have the needed pre-plans. And I think, given our demographics, we have some folks in this community that could very well aid and assist us in developing those pre-plans. Third area, this is a little bit more touchy, because it's a truly professional service, but there's also quite a few seasoned RNs that are in retirement. And we felt that maybe using a registered nurse to do some of our quality assurance and quality inspection of our emergency medical services reports would add a customer service element that would allow us to kind of look at our reports, be our own devil's advocate, so to speak, having a member on staff and be able to look at that. And then the final area was perhaps using a battalion chief aide. We also have a number of members in our community that we know came from the fire service background. One of my primary concerns as a fire chief is making sure folks respond to and return from emergency calls in a very safe and effective manner. One of my high risks is our battalion chiefs, when they respond currently, with the added benefit of technology radios, mobile data computers, cell phones, and oh, by the way, now you're asked to drive emergency traffic through town with lights and sirens, it's very easy to become distracted. We can also employ these folks in some of the other quality improvement stuff that the battalion chiefs do on a day-to-day basis. So what we did was kind of take a holistic approach as best we can, looked at venues and avenues that we felt were plausible, feasible, and with limited to no increase in cost to our service, and hopefully be able to enlist some sort of auxiliary services within our community members to help us out on the fire service. Kind of the next steps, and again, these are always kind of things that, you know, you can think from a concept piece, but right at the moment, we don't know, the devil becomes in the details a little bit as to what type of skill sets. So we've kind of put together a timeline here as we move forward into the new budget year. July and August, we could start looking at the skill sets that we're trying to attract to address these target areas, create, pardon me, conduct some initial screenings of individuals, and we're looking at a force probably no more than maybe 12 or 13, 14 individuals in order to provide that kind of, to supplement and shore up some of our services. September, October, we could probably roll out with some customer service elements. Naturally, we would train our, train these folks into what their expectations are, provide them some basic customer service training, and some specialty training as to what our expectations are, and then see what that model change brings about. If there's a positive outpouring, and if it's effective, I think in December, we could offer some sense of evaluation in ample time to move forward to see if we need to, or if we can expand, or if we need to contract such a program moving into the budgetary process for FY18. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Again, it's very generic in a sense, but I think, you know, the order and direction was fairly clear in March, and we wanted to follow through with that and bring something for you today.
Councilman Lozelle, do you, I got your number up here.
That was before when...
Oh, that's okay.
Lars.
Lars was up here.
[laughing]
But thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council.
Actually, it's not even for you, Lars, I mean, you don't, you're just telling me the number. Last year, I was not in favor of the GPREP, given our financial situation, and I was told that during the budget process, that, oh, it's not spent, so then when they came to get their money, we get to vote on it. So then I asked, I thought, you know, let's not, let's not vote, you know, I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. And then I was told by the, not you, the other mayor, that they're anticipating the money. So are they anticipating the money, or do we, do we approve it when it's ready to be spent? I guess my point is, I can't support the $40,000 for GPREP.
I got a comment about that, too. And as you might know, and I think everybody will remember here, I didn't support it last time, well, and eventually did support it, with the caveat that they would come here once every quarter to give us a presentation of what GPREP is actually doing. That has not followed through either. I know they have a director that makes over $80,000 a year. I don't know what they're working on, I don't have any information on what's been achieved by GPREP or the region. If we are a part of the region, overall region, and what's going on in Prescott Valley, Chino, Prescott, Dewey, Humble, you would think that somebody would give us an ongoing education for $40,000 of what they're doing. I have not seen that except for one time, and that was the stay tuned, we have a lot of interesting things coming up. I still haven't heard them.
And I'll agree with you, Steve, and we pay more to them than the League of Cities, which I'm not in favor of, but I'm not, it's not a deal breaker with that, but we get monthly communiques from the, from the League, and it's far less than GPREP.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Number one, thanks for your presentation, chief, you did a great job. Thanks for listening to some of our concerns, kind of helps me out in the process of budget, you know what I mean? Remember, we had that conversation, looking for a reason to support the budget. All right. Lars, I don't know if I'm supposed to ask you or Mr. Woodfill, but what we're looking at today is a tentative budget approval on a timeline, we're not looking at approving the budget. There's a difference between the budget and tentative budget, the budget only, only puts a cap. Am I correct?
That's correct. So today is the estimated amount, which is a tentative, and the final would be two weeks from today.
I can vote for the tentative budget with all full intentions of voting against some of the things that are in the budget, if I don't like what's in the budget.
Personal preference.
Well, that, that answers the question. So because we vote to move this forward, all we're doing is voting on a cap. The budget will be given to us later.
Yes. Councilman Shiski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of order here, we are getting a GPREP presentation June 21st at the study session.
That it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilwoman Wilcox?
With regard to the community outreach manager position, my recollection of that discussion at the budget workshop was that we needed an outreach person to deal with the public works, open houses, and all the publicity. We have lots of projects where we want the neighborhood and the people to understand what we're doing. It wasn't to replace the position that we eliminated in the mid-year budget cuts, and it wasn't a position to work under the city manager. So I don't know where that came from. If there was discussion about creating another position under the city manager, it wasn't the full council that agreed to it.
Mayor, would you like to comment?
Yeah.
Earlier in the meeting, the council approved the minutes for the budget workshop of May 26th, and I have those minutes here. The minutes communicate the need for a community outreach individual for the entire city, which means multiple departments. That's in the council minutes, that's, was our recollection. We also discussed or commented at that time that we were looking for strategic community outreach, just like any other program, a different focus for strategic communications for the city. The starting point would be the position that has been placed in the budget, and that is for the community outreach manager. That manager will have the responsibility for looking at interim That manager will have the responsibility for looking at in turn the strategic communication needs of the various departments, including the public works department, including recreation services, and others. And so some of those functions may not be performed now, some of those functions are being performed now, but contract, but there are questions about those contracts and so forth. So the community outreach manager position that has been placed in the budget is that person in charge of the strategic communications for the city, which reasonably would be located in the new city manager's office. And then by department and department, discuss with those directors what their needs are and how to meet those needs, which could be either done by additional personnel or contracts like they are done now. So that was, that was the discussion, and certainly the way I read the meeting minutes for the May 26th Part II Budget Workshop.
Well, I don't think the minutes went into as much detail as our discussion was at the budget workshop. The reason the whole question came up was money could be saved if we had an in-house person working on the public works, open house, and publicity, a lot of money. Right now, we spend, I don't know, $180,000 a year on hiring a company outside of Prescott from Flagstaff, bring in a dozen college kids who know nothing, and they're very nice and, you know, shuffle people around, but we have had some problems. We get notices out to the public two days before the public hearings because they go through a bulk mailing system in Flagstaff, and it just doesn't work. We could save money, we could make it more efficient, and the people who are actually running the show would know what the project is and could actually assist in the public, the open house. So unless this position is devoted largely to that purpose, I'm not in favor of it.
Counselor woman, or-
Well, I would like to address the G-Prep. I think regional cooperation is extremely important for Prescott and for our area, and I believe the return on the dollar, I agree with Councilman Blair and Councilman Mazzal, we need to hear from them more often, but I believe it's really important. Prosperity does not stop at city limits. What's good for Prescott Valley is good for Prescott and vice versa. You know, people that live and work in Prescott Valley also come to Prescott and shop and enjoy our activities. So we need to have more regional cooperation, not less. So I will really, I really hope that we stay with G-Prep, and maybe give them more guidance. You know, maybe they, we don't hear from them, do they hear from us? So maybe there's, that's two sides of that coin.
Maybe there is, if I may, mayor.
Go ahead.
Maybe there is, but last year, at this very time, during the budget, I made the comment publicly with the past city council sitting here, that we had not heard from G-Prep, and I asked that we get a quarterly meeting from them. $40,000 is a lot of money unless somebody's standing here telling us what they're doing with our money. And I don't care whether it's regional or not, if they're not telling what they're, what's happening in the region, it's no benefit to me to spend the taxpayers' money without knowing there's a process or an ongoing game plan of what they're trying to achieve. So that has been asked out of those folks, and to, once again, this year, give them $40,000 and say, oh, please, and I'm going to beg them to come to this meeting? I'm not going to do that.
I didn't mean to interrupt, I apologize. I just think that we need to be very clear in our expectations of what we expect to happen from G-Prep. You know, they have had a little bit of a hard time getting up and going, they now have a director, I believe things are starting to move. It takes a while, economic development, it takes a while to get that going.
I don't want to argue the fact, but this is year number four, okay? Year number four of G-Prep. And I'm still sitting here wondering what we're getting for the return of our investment. And I will continue to wonder that when it's taxpayers' money. And if they're not going to show up to the dais to tell us what they're doing for the region and for our taxpayers' dollar, I have no use for them. That's pretty clear. And on the other note, the reason why I had my light on, it was very clear at the budget meeting, at least I thought, Mr. McConnell, when I mentioned that there was, there was people in the community that, like Trish Lewis does for ADOT, and being the front person and doing all the communication on road projects and everything else, you know, I think the person needs to be very focused on us as a community, just like G-Prep should be focused on us as a community. That communication person should also communicate with me as a city council person. When I, and I'm a little bit offended when I have a fire call or something that goes on in this community that I need to know about, and I have to read about it in the Courier or hear about it on the radio, and I'm not getting communicated to by somebody within the administration, I'm offended by that. And I believe this person needs to be focused and given direction on exactly what we're trying to achieve. And number one, our road projects, we have, we have mentioned a thousand times over again, we have a very specific and very in-depth road project coming up over the next four or five years. That means communication with the public. And it also means when you're a city councilman, that we're communicating on is what's going on. And I don't know what, what it is, it's important that I should know that goes on in the city council, you know, world, or what goes on in the city of Prescott, but when I have people calling me and asking me what, what happened to my electricity, or what happened to the call-out of a bunch of fire or police officers, and I don't get a phone call, I find it offensive.
Okay, I'll make a couple of comments. First of all, I was raised in Arizona, not the Show Me State, but I kind of agree with Councilman Blair. There's got to be some return on investment, we've got to see something coming from, from G-Prep. And if we don't see it, as far as I'm concerned, when this comes up as a budget item later on to be paid, I'm not going to support it, because we've got to get some, some performance. And I agree with regionalization very much, but, you know, I'm just not going to throw money down the drain. You know, we're spending the taxpayers' dollar, they expect us to be very frugal with it, and I'm not going to waste it. And I've got to see some kind of performance. That's number one. Number two, we can't, you know, probably every department we got has significant issues when it comes to dealing with the public and wanting to get their, their message out. And we can't afford to give every division or half a dozen divisions their own person to be putting out anything that we need in communications with the public. And so as far as I'm concerned, the public outreach person has to be serving the entire city and all the divisions and departments that we have. It's essential. You know, where that person is, okay, we can always look at that. But the point is, we can't hire four or five people to be doing community outreach for each individual department or division. So that's one reason why we're only looking at one person, and that person's going to be extremely busy, I can tell you. You know, they don't need to know the technical things, they need to know how to talk about them after they hear the technical people indicate what the issues are. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm fully behind the community outreach person. I think the third thing is, basically what we're talking about tonight, now, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but what we're looking at today is basically saying, this is the max amount of money that we're going to spend.
That's correct.
Basically setting a ceiling on the amount of money that we're going to spend in 2017.
That's correct.
Now, I know in past years, we never even got close to the ceiling. There were some years where we were 30 or 40 million dollars below that, because, you know, projects that we had planned couldn't come online for various reasons, and I'm sure that's going to happen again this year in 2017. So I'm fully supporting the ceiling. I know that everything that's, you know, indicated in here and indicated in our, our budget book right here, you know, it's going to have to come back up to the council. We're going to have further discussions on it, we're going to be getting more public input, and we're going to make, making decisions on whether or not we're going to prove it and move forward on that. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm fully behind this particular item tonight, and I'll vote yes. Is there any further comment from the council before we go to the public?
I do have a little bit left on the presentation if you'd like.
Okay, I cut you off, go ahead.
Just to identify, the current expenditure limit is 167,288,761. That includes the community outreach manager position. There's also estimated endings for FY '16, that was something council would like to be brought to them, so it's here for information as well.
Can I get back to that real quick?
Yes, sure.
Well, your comment, the 106 is what we're anticipating we're actually going to spend this year.
That's right.
Okay. And so we budgeted for, again, like the mayor said, 148 million, so we're 42 million less than the cap. Okay, thanks.
Lars, what is the total dollar amount of add-ons that we've been talking about, the community outreach manager memberships? Well, those were in the draft budget, but the auxiliary?
The increase is 105,000.
105, okay.
And some change. And then just to briefly introduce, the included in the packet is the official legal forms for the city. These are determined by the auditor general of the state for us to use as our tentative budget. So there are seven schedules here. One of them, I'll go over real quickly, but there's a lot of information here for the public. And Schedule A is what I'll just briefly talk about. The columns indicate the fund type, so we have a general fund, special revenue fund, and so forth. And on here is the adopted expenditures for the current year, and all of the revenues that are expected to come into the city in these various funds. And this compares also FY '16 to FY '17. This schedule will be published for the public. And with that, just the next few, few final steps in the budget process is the budget adoption, the adoption of the tax levy. And with that, I'm done.
Mayor, just one correction, July 5 on that, and on the resolution needs to change to July 12 with the change of the council schedule.
Did you hear that?
Yep, so on the resolution, we currently have Section 2B. States the fifth, fifth day of July, that was the prior schedule, that have to be amended to the 12th at 3:00 PM.
Any further comments from the council before we go to the public? Any public comment?
Daniel Mattson again.
I do, I do. I just wanted to point out that as of this point in time, we really haven't had an opportunity to give any public input, and I'm really hoping that, well, hopefully, we're going to change that from 5:30 to 3:00 or whatever, but I really, really want to make sure that we have an opportunity for the public to give input at that time, because we've spent this whole time listening to you guys explain the budget, reading the information and all that. You know, this public meeting, I hope we set aside a lot of time to allow for those of us who have paid attention to have the opportunity to put in our two cents worth. Thank you.
You have the comments?
Mayor and council, Ralph Hess again. I'm going to urge you, or I am urging you, to increase the cap on this tentative budget And that amount is the difference between what the budget provides for library services in the 2017 budget and the actual expenses in 2016 for, for the library. And here's why. And I understand this has been a controversial topic at times before this council, but I'm going to just read something that I pulled offline from an article entitled Libraries and Democracy. It's, the author's Laura A. Pinhey, P-I-N-H-E-Y. And the reason I'm going to read it is it expresses what I think is, is an important, and possibly the most important, of services provided by this city, which is our public library. Public libraries provide access to all persons to a variety of information and ideas. Citizens, therefore, have enhanced opportunities for self-improvement and empowerment. Perhaps even more significant to the democratic function of libraries is that much of what can be found in public libraries today is related to democratic civic activity, such as meeting areas for individuals and groups of all kinds to allow citizens to fulfill their civic and personal responsibilities and exercise their liberties. Now, if you've been to the library, you'll see that many groups use those meeting rooms. And beginning July, you've authorized for the library to start charging people to use those meeting rooms. Now, the library policy for the library is that the meeting rooms cannot be used for commercial purposes. So anybody who's using those meeting rooms is not going to be engaged in any commercial activity. And I suspect from the groups that I've seen there, that there are going to be people who are not going to be able to use the meeting rooms because they're not going to be able to pay a fee. And the library does not have a policy that provides for waiving the fee in the event that a group can't afford to pay it. Now, I know that there's different views on this council with regard to the value of the, of the library, but it is one of the, from my view, it's one of the, the most valuable, as I said, one of the most valuable aspects of this community, and it provides services to all the citizens by making it available. So what I, the $81,000, I don't, I sat in on the workshops, but I really don't know whether that would be sufficient to enable the library to be open again on Sundays, when most, when, what, families are going to be probably most able to use it Saturdays and Sundays, and also to eliminate this decision to start charging for the meeting rooms. So since it's a cap that you're going to be setting today, and you might or might not save $40,000 with G-Prep, I'm urging you to raise the cap by $81,000, then consider this. And if you decide not to next, next meeting, I'll be disappointed, but you won't have closed the door on it. And I brought some visual aids for you, that I brought from the library. Dixon, I'm carrying them from the library to you, if I may approach. They're bookmarks that the library, oh, here. I thought you might actually like this one a little bit.
Thanks, you're a nice man. Give Blair the colors.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on down.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'll be brief because it's late.
Identify yourself, please.
My name is Richard Kaplan, I live in Yavapai Hills here in Prescott. Because I think it relates to the budget, I'll just bring this up. I was, I meant to come and speak on the prior issue that related to Mr. McConnell, and I wanted to just raise an issue, and I don't know if it was deliberate or an oversight because of the lateness of the hour, that there was no opportunity for public comment on that subject. I know you voted, and so if it was deliberate, that's fine, and I'll sit down, but it may have just been an oversight.
It was entirely something, a decision of the council. That's the reason why I didn't go to the public.
I had read in the paper about it, and I have no view what you should do, and I'm not trying to argue one side or the other, but at least in the Courier, the article seemed to take it as a given, that the severage provision for Mr. McConnell, it was an automatic right that he was entitled to take this other position. And frankly, I haven't seen the agreement, but I read the language carefully that was recited or quoted in the Courier, and it says that if, if there's action by the city council, it says in the event the city manager is demoted or terminated or removed by the council. And I- And I think there's a difference between termination and resignation, which was an issue that one of the council persons raised. And I think also that the way the provision reads, and I think this is for your lawyers, but the way the provision reads, it's when the council does something to end the position, then the severance package is triggered. And I would just encourage the city council to act in the best interests of the city of Prescott, and that may involve giving Mr. McConnell that position, but it may not. I just think the decision should be made without a quick or too fast of a reading of the language in the contract, and I would encourage you to at least discuss that with council.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 4335-1544.
Second.
Wait, I would like to amend that motion.
Oh.
I would like us to...
We have to withdraw the motion?
Well...
Well, she can...
See what the amendment is, okay.
Councilwoman Wilcox can ask Councilwoman Orr to amend the motion.
Since what we're doing is setting a cap, I'd like us to approve the statements and schedules attached with the addition of $186,000 to cover the additional add-ons and the $81,000 for the library.
Well, the... The add-ons, the position and the memberships are already in the budget?
Right, the memberships are, but the community outreach position, wasn't that added on?
It was, that's in the tentative budget.
It is.
It was added to the tentative budget.
You know, this was on my desk this afternoon, and I haven't had time to read the whole thing.
You haven't gotten through that?
All right, well, then I would just add the $81,000 for the library.
And again, it's an overall cap, and council, if council decides that they want to move money, $81,000 and 100, and the amount of this budget, that can be done through motion. We don't really need to change the forms unless you feel very strongly about it. I mean, we could move it...
Where would you move it from?
Available appropriation somewhere else. There's always a lot of grants that are anticipated that don't come in, that appropriation could be moved from if needed, other things like that.
Well, if I might, again, this is a cap. It sets appropriation, creates appropriation. If the intent is to restore something to any department, the library, for example, then that would need to be done by finding that money somewhere in that appropriate fund, which is a discussion for another day. Now, the council in adopting the budget could say, we see this budget here, and we understand what it consists of, however, we'd like to make some changes to it. Then that would be appropriate for the discussion two weeks from today. And then, you know, if that passed by a majority vote, then we would have to get into the budget and find that $80,000 somewhere in the appropriate fund. But I think, as been pointed out here, we're probably $40 to $50 million in excess of what we're actually planning or expecting to expend. So for the today, the purpose of today's meeting, I think there's like $40 or $50 million of additional appropriation authority that's not going to be used, which would certainly cover anything like has been discussed today. Specific changes to the budget, specific modifications, positions, whatever you want to call it, that is something that can be put on an agenda, and then we would talk about where that money would, actual money would come from. We're talking appropriation authority today, not the actual money that would be expended.
Okay.
Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Attorney, again, appropriate to a previous comment that I made, and to Councilwoman Wilcox's point, the council, out of the appropriate fund mechanism, at any time has the authority vested in us by the public when they chose us to sit here. If we would like at some point in the future to take out of the general fund, I think that's the mechanism in which we fund the library. It's one of the items in the general fund, and we find that we need to do something within the library, and we have the money to do it, we can do that. We don't have to have it spelled out in restricted funds and everything else. We can do that at any time.
Right, we can, you can move money within the general fund.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Blair.
Just so I can hear it be said, Mr. Manager, within this budget, it contemplates funding for pay compensation, pay compensation upgrade, as well as raises for our employees in the city of Prescott.
Included in this budget, which has been proposed to the council, is funding in fiscal year '17 of the market competitive compensation plan, which does provide those adjustments that were described at a workshop earlier this year.
Okay. And does it also include the possible pay raises?
Yes. Yeah, we...
Adjustments and pay raises.
Well, we call them adjustments because it's a little bit more complicated than just raises. Some positions are at market, others are not at market, depending upon where you are in the range, there are different criteria.
Okay, thank you.
But generally speaking, yes, it includes raises.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there any further discussing before we go back to the original motion?
Just for the record, I think the intent was to include the July 12 date on that resolution, as we discussed earlier.
So it should say, with the change to Section 2, Item B, the city will meet at a regular meeting on the 12th day of July 2016 at 3:00 p.m.
Yes. Is that correct, Councilwoman Orr?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. It's been a long night. Give me just about a minute here, and I'll give you my famous words from some of our founding fathers, and, you know, when you consider the Constitution, it's supposed to protect the people from the frailties of their rulers. And James Madison said, "If angels were to govern men, neither external or internal controls on government would be necessary. But lacking these, you must find, first enable the government to control the governed, and in the next place, oblige itself to control itself." Thank you.
[laughing]